Live from El Paso County, Texas, the Veterans Capital of the USA. From inside to the Alicia Chacone Commissioners' courtroom of the Enrique Moreno County Courthouse, you are watching the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meeting.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Thursday, August 21, 2025. Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular, oh, I'm sorry, we're meeting in special open session. Today, we are joined by ASL interpreters James Garcia and Selena Salum. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Judge, would you like to make some opening remarks?
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much. On behalf of our commissioners and myself, we welcome you to a special session. It feels good. I feel a lot of energy, like it's a little different from Monday. So I know we really love to go through things and be able to hear from you. So very excited on these sessions because it gives us a little bit more time to really think through things. So very appreciative of everybody and everything you did to get to this special session. So wishing you a great day and hopefully a great weekend as it starts tomorrow. So thank you for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to go ahead and just go to item four, public comment. We do not have any speakers sign up for this item, so we will take no action for item number four. Item number three from the regular agenda, 3A, pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code, Section 115.021, audit and settle all accounts against the county shown on the attached listing and direct the payment of those accounts. That's your Fatsy.
Barbara?
I don't know if Barbara's online or any representative from the Auditor's Office.
This is our normal paid claims. We added it to Thursday because we're trying to make sure we're getting them approved and turned around as quickly as possible. So we would just ask for a favorable motion to approve paying our bills.
I don't know, is there anything related to me that I need to abstain from?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
We have a motion from Commissioner Butler, second by Commissioner Coronado. The voting is open.
Mine's not on, so aye.
Commissioner, stop. Thank you. Motion carries. Commissioner Ogina is absent. Item 3B, receive a presentation on the County of El Paso Pathway to American Citizenship for Employees Program. Opinion number 8166.
Welcome, Irene.
Good morning, County Judge Commissioners, Irene Gutierrez with Community Services Department. So this morning, we want to bring you a presentation on a concept that you all asked us in one of your past strategic priorities under your goal number seven for value the county family. You asked us to come up with a program or a concept to assist our county employees with advancement in their naturalization citizenship process. And so we worked with HR, we did some surveying and provided and received rather feedback from our county employees and put together a concept for you all to consider as a benefit to county employees, again, in fulfilling one of your strategic priorities from your past strategic plan. And so before I turn it over to Lori, I just wanted to sort of introduce this concept and this process for you all, and then Lori will finish up with the review of the program and the background.
Thank you, Irene. Welcome, Lori.
Hello, yes, Judge Commissioners, Loree Gonzalez-Flores with the Community Services Department, Office of New Americans. So I'm here today to present on this new county benefit for county employees called Pathway to American Citizenship for Employees, also known as PACE. So let's see. So why PACE? So this item is to fulfill strategic goal 7.1.1, which is to value the El Paso County family. It will be to assist county employees who are in need of support and advancement in the citizenship process. In conversation with HR, we do have about 100 county employees that are lawful permanent residents that may benefit from this type of program. And of course, we know that through the citizenship naturalization process, it does open doors for voting, civic engagement, job advancement. It gives individuals the confidence to seek leadership roles within the county. And of course, we know through naturalization, individuals do gain full legal rights and protections. So for the program purpose, so PACE does provide financial reimbursement and supportive services to eligible county employees pursuing U.S. citizenship. It will encourage long-term employment, promote supportive work culture. And in adopting this policy, we are recognizing the diverse workforce that we have with the county of El Paso. So what is covered? So this policy or this new program would help with reimbursement of the, I guess, costs associated with filing the N-400 application. So $760 would be to pay for the filing fee and the biometrics fee. We did allocate, or we have allocated $15,200 to assist up to 20 employees a year. And again, the $760 is going to be to cover the expenses associated with the naturalization process. Again, it's to cover the N-400 filing fee and the biometrics fee. With this program, other services would be provided by ONA in collaboration with some of our legal advocacy, legal providers in our community, to include USCIS. We would provide information sessions to county employees. We would coordinate legal clinics specifically for county employees interested in starting the process. And also, my team would provide free citizenship classes and English classes. And of course, we would make study tools available. These study tools have been provided to us by USCIS. So we're talking about like study guides and flashcards, and all of that would be made available to our county employees. So as I go through the slide, one thing you're going to notice is that it closely resembles the county's tuition assistance program. So for example, to be eligible for this program, individuals or employees must be full-time or part-time, non-temp. They must be post-probation and have received a meet standards or better on their performance review. They must not have disciplinary actions in the last 12 months, and of course, they must be eligible to naturalize. There are some limits to this program. So for example, the reimbursement amount will be based on current USCIS fees, and that's important to know because right now, the federal administration is looking at increasing the cost of the application fee. So for now, like I mentioned earlier, it would be $760 reimbursement unless they were eligible for a fee waiver. It will be on a first-come, first-served basis while funds are available, and it would be a one-time assistance per employee. And for part-time employees, it would be based on a prorated reimbursement. So what are the employee responsibilities for this program? Once they've completed the citizenship application process, once they've gone to the biometrics appointment, once they've gone to the interview with the USCIS officer, and they attend their naturalization ceremony, they will be provided a certificate of naturalization. So once they receive their certificate of naturalization, they will have 45 days to submit the paperwork to get reimbursed. They must submit the proof of payment along with the I-797C, which will show how much they paid, and of course, a copy of the certificate. Once they have received the reimbursement, they will commit to one year of continuous employment with the county, and they must get with HR to update their Form I-9 to reflect their updated status. And again, that's once they've completed the naturalization process. So some final notes here. All information shared through this process will be confidential, managed per county privacy policies. Policy and request forms will be made available on the HR site so that county employees can access that. And we will be bringing this back to you on September 15 for the adoption of the policy. And one thing I want to say is we've been having conversations with other municipalities across the state of Texas. We would be the first of its kind to offer this type of service. Some of the other municipalities do already help their employees with citizenship classes, English classes, but we would be taking that a little, one step further in reimbursing their naturalization fees. And with that, that is my part of the presentation. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Jacob Reynolds to go over the public purpose.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say thank you for this program. You know, as a resident, they should feel comfortable, but because of the situation, a lot of residents have asked me about, you know, are they in danger to lose it? Can things change?
Love to go through things and be able to hear from you. So, very excited on these sessions because it gives us a little bit more time to really think through things. So, very appreciative of everybody and everything you did to get to this special session. So, wishing you a great day and hopefully a great weekend as it starts tomorrow. So, thank you for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to go ahead and just go to item four, public comment. We do not have any speakers sign up for this item, so we will take no action for item number four. Item number three from the regular agenda, 3A, pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code, Section 115.021, audit and settle all accounts against the county shown on the attached listing and direct the payment of those accounts.
That's your Betsy?
Barbara?
I don't know if Barbara's online or any representative from the auditor's office.
This is our normal paid claims. We added it to Thursday because we're trying to make sure we're getting them approved and turned around as quickly as possible. So, we would just ask for a favorable motion to approve paying our bills.
I don't know. Is there anything related to me that I need to abstain from?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
We have a motion from Commissioner Butler, second by Commissioner Coronado. The voting is open.
Mine's not on, so aye.
Commissioner Stock? Thank you. Motion carries. Commissioner Ogden is absent. Item 3B, receive a presentation on the County of El Paso Pathway to American Citizenship for Employees Program, opinion number 8166.
Welcome, Irene.
Good morning, County Judge Commissioners, Irene Gutierrez with Community Services Department. So, this morning, we want to bring you a presentation on a concept that you all asked us in one of your past strategic priorities under your goal number seven for value the county family. You asked us to come up with a program or a concept to assist our county employees with advancement in their naturalization citizenship process. And so, we worked with HR, we did some surveying and provided and received rather feedback from our county employees and put together a concept for you all to consider as a benefit to county employees, again, in fulfilling one of your strategic priorities from your past strategic plan. And so, before I turn it over to Lori, I just wanted to sort of introduce this concept and this process for you all, and then Lori will finish up with the review of the program and the background.
Thank you, Irene. Welcome, Lori.
Hello, this is Judge Commissioners, Loree Gonzalez Flores with the Community Services Department, Office of New Americans. So, I'm here today to present on this new county benefit for county employees called Pathway to American Citizenship for Employees, also known as PACE. So, let's see. So, why PACE? So, this item is to fulfill strategic goal 7.1.1, which is to value the El Paso County family. It will be to assist county employees who are in need of support and advancement in the citizenship process. In conversation with HR, we do have about 100 county employees that are lawful permanent residents that may benefit from this type of program. And of course, we know that through the citizenship naturalization process, it does open doors for voting, civic engagement, job advancement. It gives individuals the confidence to seek leadership roles within the county. And of course, we know through naturalization, individuals do gain full legal rights and protections. So, for the program purpose, so PACE does provide financial reimbursement and supportive services to eligible county employees pursuing U.S. citizenship. It will encourage long-term employment, promote supportive work culture. And in adopting this policy, we are recognizing the diverse workforce that we have with the county of El Paso. So, what is covered? So, this policy or this new program would help with reimbursement of the, I guess, costs associated with filing the N-400 application. So, $760 would be to pay for the filing fee and the biometrics fee. We did allocate, or we have allocated $15,200 to assist up to 20 employees a year. And again, the $760 is going to be to cover the expenses associated with the naturalization process. Again, it's to cover the N-400 filing fee and the biometrics fee. With this program, other services would be provided by ONA in collaboration with some of our legal advocacy, legal providers in our community, to include USCIS. We would provide information sessions to county employees. We would coordinate legal clinics specifically for county employees interested in starting the process. And also, my team would provide free citizenship classes and English classes. And of course, we would make study tools available. These study tools have been provided to us by USCIS. So, we're talking about like study guides and flashcards. And all of that would be made available to our county employees. So, as I go through the slide, one thing you're going to notice is that it closely resembles the county's tuition assistance program. So, for example, to be eligible for this program, individuals or employees must be full-time or part-time, non-temp. They must be post-probation and have received a meet standards or better on their performance review. They must not have disciplinary actions in the last 12 months. And of course, they must be eligible to naturalize. There are some limits to this program. So, for example, the reimbursement amount will be based on current USCIS fees. And that's important to know because right now, the federal administration is looking at increasing the cost of the application fee. So, for now, like I mentioned earlier, it would be $760 reimbursement unless they were eligible for a fee waiver. It will be on a first-come, first-served basis while funds are available. And it would be a one-time assistance per employee. And for part-time employees, it would be based on a prorated reimbursement. So, what are the employee responsibilities for this program? Once they've completed the citizenship application process, once they've gone to the biometrics appointment, once they've gone to the interview with the USCIS officer, and they attend their naturalization ceremony, they will be provided a certificate of naturalization. So, once they receive their certificate of naturalization, they will have 45 days to submit the paperwork to get reimbursed. They must submit the proof of payment along with the I-797C, which will show how much they paid, and of course, a copy of the certificate. Once they have received the reimbursement, they will commit to one year of continuous employment with the county, and they must get with HR to update their Form I-9 to reflect their updated status. And again, that's once they've completed the naturalization process. So, some final notes here. All information shared through this process will be confidential, managed per county privacy policies. Policy and request forms will be made available on the HR site so that county employees can access that. And we will be bringing this back to you on September 15th for the adoption of the policy. And one thing I want to say is we've been having conversations with other municipalities across the state of Texas. We would be the first of its kind to offer this type of service. Some of the other municipalities do already help their employees with citizenship classes, English classes, but we would be taking that a little, one step further in reimbursing their naturalization fees. And with that, that is my part of the presentation. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Jacob Reynolds to go over the public purpose.
And I just wanted to say, thank you for this program. You know, as a resident, they should feel comfortable, but because of the situation, a lot of residents have asked me about, you know, are they in danger to lose it? Can things change? And so, it would be so nice that the individuals, that we get them in the process and able to reach citizenship just because, you know, we care about our employees, but it still feels threatening to them that they're in that status. And I was not aware of that until recently, that individuals with that status have come up and asked me if they're vulnerable in that situation. So, thank you very much. It's a great program.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners. Jacob Reynolds, Assistant County Attorney.
Thank you, Jacob. Welcome.
I'm here to share a few notes about the public purpose analysis for this program. As you all know, expenditures of public funds must have a valid public purpose that can be granted through statutory authority. And even if an expenditure benefits an individual, as long as the public purpose is served, it'll be found permissible. Here, the, under the Government Code, Chapter 152, counties, including the El Paso County Commissioners' Court, have brought authority to determine employee compensation and benefits. This includes offering fringe or de minimis benefits, which can improve employee morale and productivity. The Texas Attorney General has previously opined on these kinds of programs, and they've advised that a wide range of expenditures that are made to enhance employee morale or productivity serve a valid public purpose. And to demonstrate kind of the wide variety of things that have been advised to be permissible in the past include holiday parties, small gifts, childcare facilities for county employees, and plus ones for employee awards banquets. And if any of the commissioners or the judge wish to see those advisory opinions, we'd be happy to provide them. That's all I have on this topic. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Jacob. Appreciate that.
I'll turn it back over to Ms. Lori.
Thank you, Jacob. So, any questions?
I was gonna, you know, Betsy, we've been talking to, I think I've talked to several, Kelly Tomlin from Electric Company, Dr. Heather Wilson, Elizabeth O'Hara from Gas Company, and every CEO. I was able to meet yesterday with a lot of, from the chamber, that were new members, and they wanted to understand government. But one of the things that I said is that if every company took care of their own and helped their employees, then it would take the burden off the county. And that because of how we're being cut back and how things are happening, we do need to sort of put a little more responsibility. So, I think it'd be amazing for us to share that, this program, and what you're doing with individuals that are very open to that, like Kelly and Dr. Heather Wilson, because they're going through the same situation. And that would help us because then it doesn't feel like we're doing something just for our employees, but we're also advocating for other CEOs to do the same for theirs. And if they do that, I think it balances things a little bit better for us. So, I would love to see if Irene and maybe present the program to some of the CEOs in the bigger organizations.
Certainly, Judge. So, of course, this item's not presented for action for you today. We will be putting the policy and the procedures on September 15th for you to approve it officially. And so, if the court approves it at that time, then we'd be happy to kind of present this program.
And you know, we've always said that it's hard to go tell other companies to do something that we're not doing. So, once it passes, I would really encourage, I'll set up the meetings and get other organizations to do the same so it could be more widespread.
Absolutely. Like Lori said, you know, other municipalities, other government entities have introduced citizenship classes, English classes, those types of things. But they've not extended this as a benefit to their employees. So, this would be sort of a model program if approved across the state. And so, I know that you all always support kind of being ahead of the game of other municipalities, and you've always supported, and you take your goal number seven very, very seriously in valuing, and this is just one of those small steps for our employees.
I also want to comment, you know, things are very quiet. It seems quiet, but it's never quiet for you two. I know that for a fact, because it seems like, well, you know, immigration's a little, it's calmer, and, but you still deal with so many things in your department. And so, and I hear that from different, United Way and others. So, thank you both for what you do, even while it's quiet for us.
That's right. And Judge, I just wanted to add anecdotally. A few weeks ago, I met Congressman Gonzalez out in Montana Vista, and we toured the Montana Vista Community Center that's being run by La Fea right now. And he was really interested in the citizenship classes that are offered there. He said, you know, aside from the immigration crackdown, we should, the government should be promoting citizenship classes, right? And he said that he'd be interested in learning more. And I just say that to say, I think, I hope, that this is something that can be agreed upon by, you know, all different government levels, but also, we don't have to recreate the wheel. There are resources out there. There's organizations out there that offer classes, that offer these resources already. And we should, when we talk to companies and CEOs, be able to leverage those resources as much as possible.
Yeah, we've, through Lori's effort and the Office of New Americans, partnered with several schools throughout the community and the county. Other organizations, like Lori mentioned, we work very closely with Las Americas and Estrella del Paso and some of these efforts. And so, we have very good partners that work with us. Our citizenship classes are well-attended. Our English classes are well-attended as well. We're starting to offer virtual classes as well for, you know, adults who can't access it in person. And so, those are becoming very popular in our community. And so, those are thanks to Lori's effort and her team. I do also want to add that this, if approved, this program will be managed in-house by the Office of New Americans. We work very collaboratively with HR to create the policy and the concept similar to the tuition reimbursement. But we will take care of the eligibility for our employees. We will take care of the reimbursement with help from HR because we need information about their performance and things of that nature. So, but it will be handled in-house by the Office of New Americans.
Excellent. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you both, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. And I apologize, I didn't mention that Commissioner Ogden will be coming in in a little while. She was not able to attend the first part of it, but she'll be back. She'll be here when opportunity comes, sir.
Item 3C, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the residential street lighting capital improvement program FY 2026 through 2030 using road and bridge special revenue, special revenue road and bridge streetlights.
Welcome.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners Jorge Morales with Planning and Development, Public Works, here to represent and discuss the county's streetlight program, with the, including the proposed streetlight program for fiscal years 2026 through 2030. So, the five-year streetlight plan aims to enhance residential street lighting in El Paso County by prioritizing locations in the four commissioner precincts. The plan builds on the previous five-year plan, analyzing its successes and shortcomings to ensure improved efficiency, cost effectiveness, and community impact. Successes of the previous plan saw installation of 300 streetlights in the unincorporated areas of the county. The plan also saw increased lighting coverage with focus on roadway intersections. We saw improved energy efficiency with the transitioning to LED fixtures. Another success that we were able to establish was a working relationship with El Paso Electric staff that allowed us to provide adequate and safe streetlight installations. Some of the challenges that we saw in the previous five-year plan were due to manufacturing and logistics of equipment initially, and available personnel that caused delays in installations in the previous plan. Power source availability is a challenge due to the maximum distance for El Paso Electric to run power cable to a streetlight. That maximum distance is 160 feet. In some cases, foliage did not allow for installation, along with structures which have not allowed us to install installations due to safety concerns, due to the proximity of the power cable if it were to become loose. Limited availability of El Paso Electric staff to schedule work was a challenge. We work to meet with El Paso Electric quarterly, and we visit the streetlight locations out in the field to verify that the locations are safe. A review of the previous plan includes installation of 300 streetlights to date. Areas in precinct one saw lighting installed in Squaredance and Montana Vista, south of Montana, at 108 streetlights. Precinct two saw installations at Ascara Te Park, along Segura Drive by the Delta Nine Golf Course. Precinct three saw installations of streetlights in Favens, Torneo, El Paso Hills, Parks, and Awadute, with installations in smaller communities like Panorama Village, Vista Larga, and Citizen Transfer Road in Favens, for a total of 143 streetlights. Precinct four saw installation of streetlights in Westway and Canutillo, to include lighting along Los Mochis Drive, for 37 installations in precinct four. We received feedback and suggestions that were provided by the court during a special meeting on June 26. Since the special meeting, we collaborated with county commissioners' offices to discuss improvements and recommendations to the plan. The feedback was received and was integrated into the present plan. Objectives of the plan are to continue to improve nighttime visibility and safety around residential neighborhoods and at intersections. The plan will look at installing lighting around community parks and mailbox clusters, these being new focus areas for the plan. In the plan, we propose the minimum distance be between 100 to 150 feet to allow the lighting along a budding roadway for a park facility and a mailbox cluster. The plan would continue with installation of LED fixtures. The plan would consider foliage removal in cases where foliage would be considered a safety hazard. The new plan, new to the plan is expansion of, to installation eligibility to municipal areas subject to their standards. The new plan provides a mechanism for as-requested installations by members of the court to address lighting gaps that are discovered. So, the next slide shows the lighting standards that we have, that have been set by previous plans and will continue to be the standard for installations in the new plan. So, at intersections close to, as close as a streetlight can be installed at a corner, at intervals between, at equal intervals between intersections unless otherwise determined for better coverage. Within urbanized areas, residential streetlights shall have no greater distance than 300 linear feet apart from any other county residential streetlight. Within rural areas, residential streetlights shall be placed no less than 1,300 feet apart from any other residential streetlight in all directions. Streetlight fixtures installed at a height of no less than 15 feet. The plan will alleviate traffic conditions or unusual terrain, which may present a threat to public safety and well-being. Funding plan. Does streetlight installations use the road and bridge special revenue account? The plan is not asking for new funding. Rather, we are seeking authority to use funding that is available through the special revenue account. Diagram here shows breakdown of.
Hey, Victor, how are you?
Good.
Good.
Good. Miguel, could you mute that, please?
So, from the feedback we received from the precinct office, installations were increased to 120 streetlight installations per year compared to 100 installations we presented back in June. This is to capture additional lighting locations. We are confident that we can visit 30 locations every quarter and that we would successfully be able to install 120 streetlights per year for the next five years. Annual installations would be as follows, 120 installations per year, per fiscal year for fiscal years 2026 through 2030. Current cost to power and LED are $10.56 a year. Installations for LED streetlights currently cost $1,700 per pole compared to $1,400 from the previous plan. The new plan considers a 5% increase per year for rising material and installation costs. Again, small funding has been set aside for as-requested installations. The table on the screen provides a breakdown of the costs, which includes a 5% increase for installations per year, the yearly energy costs to pay for the streetlights installed, and sets aside funding for tree trimming in cases where trees can be trimmed to allow for a safe installation. The overall cost to implement the streetlight installations for the revised plan would be $1,165,282. Again, funding would be available from the special revenue account, and the department is seeking authority to use those funds. Funding request, seeking authority to use the road and bridge special revenue account, SR RMB streetlights to expend $1,165,252 for fiscal years 26 through 30. Bearing forward $384,526 unused from previous five-year plan. New authority to begin expending in fiscal year of 2026. For the proposed lighting locations, park lighting, we'll look to install streetlights for a total of 126 for the four precincts. Breakdown is as follows. For precinct one, we completely maximize lighting locations at Ascara Te Park and increased that by 10 streetlights for a total of 20 streetlights. In precinct two, 57 streetlights were allocated in precinct three, and 45 streetlights for park, park streetlight lighting. In precinct four, increased by 20 from the previous plan for Gallegos Park. The mailbox clusters, so we conducted analysis and determined where mailbox clusters are located within the unincorporated areas of El Paso County and determined the following. We found 45 mailbox cluster locations, of which 25 locations require lighting in precinct one. 234 mailbox clusters were found in precinct three, of which 78 locations would see lighting installed. And 25 mailbox clusters were found in precinct four, of which 20 require lighting. That would be a total of 123 installations for mailbox clusters. The purpose for mailbox cluster installations would provide additional lighting to already existing lighting in neighborhoods where we determine that lighting is necessary for safe mail drop-off and retrieval. Lastly, residential lighting. We conducted analysis using mapping software and ran 300-foot intervals of where lighting is still missing and found that we would work on streetlight installation in areas listed in the table for each precinct. Precinct one would see lighting come to Hillcrest Estates and Hillcrest Center, Homestead Meadows North and South, Squaredance, Mountain Meadows, Vista de Lomas, and Waco Tacs. Precinct three would additionally see lighting in Awadute, Clean Area, Darrington Area, Favens, Horizon Area, San Elizario Area, Sparks, and Torneo. Precinct four would see lighting installations in Canutillo, Mayfair, Upper Valley, and Westway. So, for a total of 351 residential streetlights on the plan. In summary, the five-year streetlight plan looks to enhance community safety and accessibility by installing lighting in key locations like residential neighborhoods, county parks, and mailbox clusters. These enhancements will contribute to a safer and welcoming environment for outdoor activity and community engagement. As the program moves forward, continued assessment and maintenance will ensure long-term effectiveness and provide a well-able and secure community forum. End to my presentation, and we'll answer any questions the court may have.
Commissioner Stock, in your area, is there any?
Well, that's one thing that I was gonna, I was gonna ask. Have we?
Have we, have we looked at precinct two, other than Ascarate Park to, to, I mean, I know that there have to be areas that I know are within the city limits, obviously, but, that do need, that do need lighting and it's very stark example to me here, the lack of equity when it comes to this, this project and, and not having, I mean, Ascarate Park is, is a park, but like, I'm sure people would love to have residential or, or, or streetlights as well and, and just 20, 20 lights over the next five years in precinct two is, is a little concerning to me. And so I'm wondering if, if there was any work done to, to try to identify other, other areas within precinct two.
Hello Commissioner, thank you for the question. So I, it's a, it's a broad topic and so in this plan, what we've done is we've been specific to expand the eligibility for the program to the municipalities, realizing that we think that there's a lot of potential in working with the city of El Paso to do this. We don't have the data for, for those streetlights, but it's something that we can work on over the next five years to get that data and, and, and map out those locations. So I think that there's a lot of potential for this in, in so far as what we can do now. We just don't have the means or ability to immediately to do those, but we built into the program that potential and that is our intention to be working towards those, those efforts.
So, so what do we need to do to have the means to be able to, I mean, because five years is a long time to wait and, you know, it's just, it kind of, and I'm.
Commissioner.
No disrespect or no, no, not trying to cast aspersions on anybody's work, I know you guys do great work and work hard, but it seems to me that.
I think there, so I believe.
There should be other manners to look at.
I believe, and I may be remembering wrong, but I thought when I saw the first draft of this presentation, there was also an alternate that just said divided up, 120 divided by four, 30 per precinct. And then that you all went and met with the court, members of the court. Did you meet with all members of the court?
We communicated with all members of the court and received feedback from all the precincts except precinct two, we did reach out to your office twice, Commissioner, and we did not receive any feedback.
So, but that, but that is also an option. I mean, the, if the court wants to divide, you see what the needs are, the plan that has, as presented. It does not include the needs for any, any analysis of precinct two. And Michael, you may have mentioned this when you were explaining the, the challenges, but I also don't know, how does the billing work on the lighting? So I, I know we pay the bill, I, I see where we pay for street lighting, but is it like, are they connected to each other? Would it be on, would it be a challenge? If we started doing residential in the middle of the city where there's already other lights? Would, would it be a challenge separating out our bill versus the city's bill? Do we know that?
That's a great question and, and I don't have the answer to that.
Okay, so that is something we would need to, to look into, but that was another, I, I believe when I saw the first draft of this, there was an option of just equally dividing them.
Absolutely, that, I think many things are possible, that is absolutely a possibility.
Well, I, I understand your perspective, Commissioner Stoudt. I think, I think what you're looking at is, is equity in, in, in funding for some of these things, but when I think about equity, I think about places in the county that don't have any lighting at all, which is what you're seeing addressed here, right? So I have a hard time thinking equity between the city, right, that has lighting standards where most of your neighborhoods, if not all, have lights set to those standards versus places in the county that don't have any lights at all. And I, I look at this list, I went through my precinct and said, this is where we need, this is every single mailbox cluster in my precinct that doesn't have a light. Make sure that's on the list for staff. Make sure that I understand exactly where they're proposing lights and that they're actually needed there. And if there are places that I know that are still dark, which there are many, many, many dark places, that, that those are on future lists. And so I think it's also up to us and our staff and our teams to know where the need is and be able to provide that feedback to staff. I think that's a good thing that you have lighting in your district, in your precinct. We don't.
I, but, and I'm not, I'm not talking about, obviously, I'm not talking about putting lights where there are already lights. Okay, I'm gonna make that very clear, I'm not proposing.
I just think you're, you're very fortunate not to have to.
Yeah, I'm not proposing something as wasteful as that, I would never do that, but I would like the opportunity to, to maybe work with the city and, and see if there are areas because they, you know, they may have lighting standards, but there may be areas that are underserved, right?
And, and we do have.
That they can't afford to put lights up yet or, you know, so as we're going forward, I mean, I, I would, I would love the opportunity to, to, to follow up. I'm sorry my staff did not follow up. But, but we, we definitely can and will going forward. And, and if we can't identify any, any, any areas, then, then so be it. But I, I'd still, I still think that, that, that that work needs to be done and so I will make sure that, that, that in my office, if we want, if we're asking for something like this, that, that we, that we identify, work with the city and with you all to, to try to identify areas that are, that we can work out.
And I think this would establish a better relationship that you're trying to enhance, you know, some of what they're doing. And, and I think it'd be, you know, and then the residency, our presence or Commissioner Stoudt's presence there in the area as well. So, I mean, he already has that presence, but to be able to, to know that he's working with the city. So I think it lends itself a little bit to that level of cooperation, so Commissioner Ogilvy?
No, and I was just gonna ask, I thought, I remembered that the program also leaves space open for when we identify an area of need that's not specifically in the plan already. Those areas can still be looked at, right? So if there is an area in precinct two that all of a sudden we become aware of that does have this need and we figure out that the city, it is, is not going to remedy it or it's not in the plan or whatever, that those types of situations can be addressed separately, correct?
Excellent, yeah, that's a really great observation, Commissioner. So built into this plan is an as, as requested, set aside for things that we did not know and discover in, in our analysis here, but that things, that come to light. And that's just upon that came to my mind right now. But nevertheless, as it's discovered, we can, we can tactically go in there and address it. So if there is lighting in the city of El Paso or in the city of San Eli or, or wherever it happens to maybe, but it's not addressed in this plan, we can just go in there and, and with the funds that are dedicated specifically for that purpose, we can do so.
Great, thank you.
This map, I wanted to mention this map is the city's streetlight map from 2024. And right now, while it does look dense, when you zoom in on these neighborhoods, there are some neighborhoods that look possibly underserved, but we would need to work in, I don't know Miguel, if you can zoom in, but you, you can see there's areas that are less densely populated with streetlights. And there are some areas that don't have any, we would need to find out, like, is it because it's a dark sky neighborhood request? Or, you know, is there a reason behind it? But this, there are areas within city limits, not all in precinct two, but there are areas within city limits that seem to be more sparsely lit. And we just have to look and see why is that? And, but when you all adopt or when we, we present this five-year plan, we can amend this at any time. And, you know, as, as Commissioner Ogilvy mentioned, there is also the ability to like identify areas that, special request areas. But we can also use this time to work to see how we could address those areas in precinct two.
I have a couple of other questions, if that's okay. I just want to make sure, well, one, thank you for working with my team on the mailbox clusters. We were able to identify some that were off the list and then remove some that already have lighting near them and the newer developments, remove things around, so I appreciate that. We still need more lights at Ruben Estrella, and I know you know that, and there are four dedicated in the parking lot, but that doesn't address the lighting issues on the back end of the park where people are actually using the park. I think one of the issues may, I don't know if it's specific to Ruben Estrella, but because it abuts, it's like open desert land in the back of it, that it's really, really dark, there's nothing behind it. Is there a way that we could address that using this plan or do you think it has to be totally separate?
We, we, in, in trying to effectuate the, the purposes that we know the court is trying to achieve and within what we, we understand the limitations of the funding source, we have done two things, we have interpreted it, interpreted it liberally, but truthfully. And so where we have been able to apply lights to parks, it's because it is along a vehicle pathway.
Okay.
Judge Commissioners, if I can add, we are planning and adding additional lights at Ruben Estrella with our projects that we're working on. These lights are lights that will be, be in the park, behind the park.
Right, I understand, I understand there's lighting included in the, in the bond project for Ruben Estrella, but that's three to four years out for Ruben Estrella Park on the bond timeline. So I just, I'm, I'm wondering if there's any way we could accelerate at least the light installation there. But maybe we can talk about that later on in the agenda.
We can talk about that, and I know last year we added additional streetlights to Ruben Estrella. So let's talk about it offline and see if we can make that happen before the project is fully executed.
Yes, thank you.
We can work with you.
And then, and then maybe this one is easier, so I just want to confirm that the linear park that's being constructed in Squaredance will have street lighting because it's all along, streetlight, a, a, a road, right?
Yes, yes, we do have streetlights dedicated to the linear park.
And there's existing lighting there on, on Squaredance already, and we maximized the wattage for those, maybe two, three years ago.
Okay, but we're gonna need more for the park, so I just want to.
Yeah, we had installed streetlights on Squaredance, but with the linear park, we have additional lights coming in.
Okay, okay, thank you so much. Thanks.
Commissioner Coronado?
Yeah, I agree, this, this looks like a better plan, thank y'all for, for working on this and I, I, I think this can be a work in progress, obviously, as new developments come up. But along with Commissioner Stoudt's request, I think, Commissioner, you, you and I may be able to get together because I think part of the areas that in, in your precinct that probably are, is gonna be headed towards the northeast side and also all the way up to New Mexico, then borders on, on precinct four. I know the Miss Heat Hills addition, I've asked for information from them about the lighting issues that they have out there, the Miss Heat Hills Neighborhood Association, and so we're waiting to hear back and I, I think this can be a work in process and maybe you and I can work together on that side of town, which is a lot in your precinct as well, to identify some of these areas. The other thing that we, maybe should work with the city is, is that instead of, if it's in an area where their city is already connected and they have streetlights and we're gonna add on to that area, maybe we can pay for the installation of them and then they can pay the cost of the actual ongoing fee, you know? I think that's something that's workable, that way we don't have to get involved in the issues of how we separate these belts out if it comes out, when these are streetlights that are lined together. So I think we, surely we should be able to work with the city on these issues. And I think this can be a work in progress. The other question I had is with respect to Los Mochis. We are, are, are we able to maybe, since that's the newest I-10 exit, are we able to work with the, the state to give us funding for that? Since it's gonna be a major exit off I-10 now?
Hi, so, again, I think many things are possible, so we will do so. We will, we will connect with them and find out what the plans are for illumination in that area.
Right.
And if not, see what we can do to encourage them to probably provide it. I think it'd be difficult for us to do it, but if we can, if we can find any gap in what may, they're doing, maybe we can bring that to light for them.
Exactly, and see if they can help out and if not, then maybe we, because that is gonna be one of the major areas now exiting because of how crowded it is around the Canutillo exit where the outlet mall is. That is always very congested and we, we saw the problem, the judge and I met with the outlet mall owners and managers of the, up there where they, they were telling us how of a problem it's getting with the traffic in there. And so maybe we can alleviate, and so obviously, this new exit is gonna alleviate some of that congestion problem. But also we want to take into consideration then the other safety factors like the lighting issues along, along Los Mochis, so.
On, on that one, Commissioner, we, we did add additional lighting where you saw previously when Canutillo subdivisions were built in that south part.
Yes.
You saw lighting along that south part of the road, but we would, we did go back two, three years ago and install like eight lights on the northern part, I mean, so we did add some lighting, but if, if there's plans for reconfiguration from other, you know, builders, constructors, then, then we will need to revisit that.
Yeah, actually, like I said, I think, you know, this should be a work in progress, but I like, I like what the new plan is. Thank you all for, okay.
Yes, and thank you for listening to all of our feedback, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Great job, thank you Michael, thank you Jose, appreciate it.
They did have a motion to, for consideration to approve and adopt the Residential Street Lighting Capital Improvement Program FY 2026 through 2030 as presented by staff, do we have a motion? I have a motion by Commissioner Coronado, second by Commissioner Ogilvy, the voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you Commissioner, thank you Judge.
Item 3D, receive a presentation from the county's operational excellence team regarding a collaborative project addressing process improvements through various county departments.
Good morning Judge Commissioners, Melissa Carillo with County Operations. This morning, we're going to share a presentation regarding a collaborative that started over a year ago. And so just to kind of set the tone, a little over a year ago, Commissioners Court asked us to continue to look into some of the challenges we were having, whether it be on the purchasing side, our payment side, our departmental ordering side. And the team that you see standing behind me has really put a lot of work into really looking at what's going on so that we can put into place some solutions to ensure that the county is as effective and as efficient as possible. And so we're very grateful to the support that we've received from our county purchasing department, our county auditor's office, and the various departments who have let this team into their homes so that as they dig and turn over rocks and figure out ways to improve, they've done, we've done it together with them. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the, to the team to share just a little bit of what they have found so far and then share what our plans are to fix things going forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to the leader of this team, Adriana Chaparro.
Thank you Melissa.
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Good morning Judge and Commissioners, happy to be here today. So just as Melissa had said, we've been in collaboration with our purchasing department, with our county auditor's department, with our budget and grants team, and as well as other end users departments, just to really understand what these challenges are and collect the feedback that we need in order for us to go ahead and, one, identify those challenges and then also develop recommendations to streamline any workflows or any internal processes that we have when it comes to from the moment of procuring something or wanting to procure something, all the way to addressing the, the payments and everything and ensure that our contractors and everybody is getting paid in a timely manner. We understand what the law is and what the law says is that we need to be paying on, on a 30-day average, just with some exceptions to that. With that, I want to say that we are compliant with that, but what we're focusing on is the actual process getting there from the time that we procure something all the way to the time of the payment. And so how we've done that is we've identified and summarized some of those issues again by talking to various departments, including the internal service departments that we have, such as our purchasing, our auditors and our budget and grants team, but also the end users, the people that actually are entering these contracts into various different systems and things like that. And then understanding some of the challenges that some of the departments are facing and then also identifying those future roles and responsibilities among the internal service department. the internal service departments, and then ultimately what those end user departments should be doing, and, and that sort of thing. And then also, we're happy to also be here to propose those solutions, see how we can better those systems, and then also, all while engaging in a collaborative approach also with everybody. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ivan Garcia.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Ivan Garcia with County Operations. I have been with the county six years now, and in this capacity for the last, it'll be a year in September. So we began this process, as Adriana said, speaking to different department representatives, department heads, admin staff, managers. And so what we identified as issues in these three different areas are payment and purchasing, trainings and communication, are a need for improvement or development of policy in the payments area, a need for standardized training, for example, in the trainings area, and an improvement in communication among departments that serve other departments in the communications area. What we found in the, from the perspective of grants, purchasing, and accounts payable, in grants, for example, what we found from speaking to these departments is that there are issues with coordination and communication during the grant submission. In the area of purchasing, some of the departments expressed not understanding, not knowing if their buyers understood their department-specific needs. In the area of accounts payable, some said that there were unclear expectations on the backup that was needed to request payment for, for whatever purchase, whatever good they're purchasing, or whatever service they need. In speaking to the auditors, the accounts payable folks, what they explained to us were that some departments are holding on to, to payments and requesting payments en masse, and so not as they're coming in. Some departments are not creating receive records, in other words, requesting payments in a timely manner, either because of delays, or for a number of reasons. And there's also a need for improvement in communication, so updating email addresses, those that respond to vendors. On this next slide, we speak, we spoke to the departments, and so members of departments pointed out, for example, not knowing net terms, when payments should be due, or when payment should be requested. Some expressed delays in delivery, so the delay in delivery causes a delay in requesting payments. Others, and many others voiced a need for training, for standardized, formalized training in these areas. The commonalities across these areas that we found from speaking to the different departments, the end users, the departments that serve other departments are, an improvement in communication is needed, clarification of roles and responsibilities, improving processes so that time, so that these processes can occur in a timely basis, an improvement in training, centralization, and follow-through across the departments. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jorge.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners. Jorge Chavez with County Operations. I've been with the county for three years, and currently assisting this magnificent team since April of this year. But before we get started, in front of you, we'll be addressing the next two slides, is the data tracking that we've been collecting throughout the phases. This data, we've been collecting since October 2024 till July of this current year. Now, as you see, these are pretty much paid claims that you see that you guys are, that are presented to you on a, on a weekly basis, on Mondays. And here, you see five phases. And these phases are addressing pretty much the initiation of the requisition to the auditor approval and check date, which is when they're printing it and paying out as well. Now, these percentages here, you see that we are, there are two tabulars in the middle, which is box two and three. We do see that there are higher percentages where we've seen a 30-day delay, or a high percentage on 30-plus days. Now, we understand that these are areas of improvement that we need to focus on, to, as addressed earlier by Ms. Adriana Chaparro, my manager, to be able to implement a little bit more efficient processes, streamline workflows, and be able to establish a little bit more process for the internal departments as well.
I'm sorry, before you move on, so I have to admit, I don't understand all of the terms.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you just explain, like, our Q, I'm assuming that's the requisition and P.O., purchase order, but can you explain, like, the difference, what all of those things are?
Absolutely. Very good question. So yes, so as you see, the first, the first box will basically be the requisition phase. So this, what this is, is when the department starts either understanding what is that they want to purchase, so they start communicating or establishing communication with our purchasing department, which eventually transitioned to a purchase order, right? And at this point, is where the purchasing department already starts giving the good-to-go, right, to be able to proceed with any good or service as well. The box number two will be the purchase, purchase order, which is basically, this will title the departments, meaning that they could start focusing on either reaching out to, for example, Amazon, or a certain type of servicer where they're trying to obtain that service or good. Box two will basically be the invoice date. So this is where the departments are starting to receive the actual service, right, their, their invoice, of what they're being charged for. So you'll have the invoice date, as well as a receive record. So for, for instances, if you have departments that are purchasing items from Amazon, Home Depot, et cetera, like that, what's gonna happen is they start receiving those goods, and they'll start sending the information on Munis, ERP Munis, saying, okay, we got the invoice, and we got the actual good itself. So let's go and proceed and submit that paperwork or the backup to our auditors, so they could go and proceed in paying out those services or goods. So then, from there, you have the fourth box, which is the ERP auditor approval. This is where the actual auditors will start receiving that backup information, invoices, anything that's subject for them to have the justification of them be able to pay out. And of course, the last box will be the paid claims phase, where it's where the auditors start putting those for Commissioners Court approval for y'all on Mondays on a weekly basis, in order for them to be able to proceed and pay out those services. Basically, it's gonna be our Munis system, which is our payment method system. And what that is, is where the departments are able to input the information either through their contract, or any type of services from the invoices, where the auditors could be able to obtain that information, and be able to look at the actual, again, the services or the goods. And also be able to track the funding, right, where is it that they're pulling those funds from as well.
Could I add a little more to the process, just to clarify? For me, like in a, like, I'm in there trying, like, thinking of this, sometimes I forget, like, all the terminology, and I'm just thinking of, like, Claudia, why, why don't we have the P.O. yet, right? Or, hey, Claudia, where, where do we have this invoice? So the first box is when the department, it's measuring the time from when the department entered it, to when purchasing issued the P.O. The second box measures the time, so purchasing issues a P.O., but then I sit on it for two weeks before I even go get the order, before I go contact Amazon, or before I go do whatever I need to do to get the order. So-
So just to stop you really quick. So, so the departments first have to do that, the requisition.
Yes.
And then, so that's the supplies that I need.
Right.
And then purchasing will issue the P.O. for those supplies.
Yes.
And then it comes back to the department, and then we have to submit then the P.O. to issue, or to actually buy those supplies.
Right. And so we, and then the second box is, like, how long is it before we get the invoice for what we just bought? And usually, the invoice is pretty much in alignment, it should be pretty much in alignment with receiving the product or the service. So that's basically, once they issue the P.O. in purchasing, how long does it take the department to get the bill? And so then the third box, once I get the bill, I have to go into Munis, and I have to tell Munis I received the product. I received this product, and so how long from the date of the invoice till I entered that into the Munis system? So that's at a department level. And then the next one is, once it's in the ERP or the Enterprise Resource Program, before auditors approves to pay it. So that's, once I did that entry, now auditors gotta go in and see I did that entry, approve, and then move it to payment phase. And then the last one is, once auditors approves it, how long is it before the check is actually cut? Which means, they, auditors approves it, it has to get on your agenda as a paid claim, and then the check is cut to the company. And this, this process that the team looked at is so critically important, because we always point fingers and say, ah, it's auditors, ah, it's purchasing. But you see that there's different phases where it's on departments, there's phases where it's on purchasing. And so it's really important that we, this way, we can hone in on, on areas that we can streamline or improve, because if I'm a business, I don't care where it's at. I want to get paid for what I just provided you. And so, and I won't bid, keep bidding or providing you, us services, which makes our competition less, which makes our prices higher. And so that's, the work this, this team is doing is really, really important. So I'll turn it back over, but I wanted to go into a little more detail on what each one of these steps means to the users.
So just to be clear, box number two and box number three, are those both at the department level then?
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's where it looks like the most delay is happening, right?
Yes, ma'am. And those are, those two boxes, again, as previously mentioned by, by my team members, it could be multiple reasons, right, for those delays. It's just not just one justified reason. It could be either miscommunication, trainings, opportunities, stuff like that. So again, these presentations that we're presenting here before y'all is to make sure that we provide those improvements, right, and be able to provide those, those streamlined services.
And some of it, some of it isn't even a operator issue. Like, for example, if I go and I order a product, but it's gonna take four months to get it, elevator parts. If we order elevator parts, we might not get the invoice for a year, because we might not get the product for a year. But that's, that would be in the P.O. to invoice box. So there's various factors that go into those, those measures.
It might be helpful if, if we put on these top of these boxes whose responsibility it is, just off the top, so we can glance at it instead of having to.
Absolutely.
Which department, like, which box responsibilities lie to go to the next step?
Absolutely, Commissioner. We could definitely do that, include that to make it more. Any other questions before we proceed? So to go more into detail with the paid claims delay here, it's a little bit more of a breakdown, as you see, from the invoice date Ms. Betsy Keller mentioned, to the actual check date, right, when the check is being printed and paid out as well. These are the percentage, again, the first tabular you see, where it's at the departmental phase, where we're having those, those improvements, areas of improvements. And we do understand that those are, are immediate attention that we need to start focusing on. Now, possible solutions. I know Ivan Garcia mentioned a little bit about the issues, now we want to address the possible solutions. How are we gonna fix it, right? So the, the way that we're gonna be fixing is, again, streamlining these solutions in the three main factors, which is the policy implementation. So we want to make sure that we update and adopt any comprehensive and internal policies as well. Training, making sure that we actually standardize and provide comprehensive payment procedures and trainings for existing employees as well as new employees as well. And the main important one, which is gonna be the effective communication, making sure that we're communicating with the departments, our end user departments, our internal service departments, making sure that we, they're the one, they're the front-end users, so they know exactly what's going on. So unless for us to be able to, to perfect this and be able to improve, we need to make sure that we get that continued feedback from them as well. And of course, having the effective collaboration. These are the governing policies that we're gonna be focused on as well to implement or ask, or be able to modify, to making sure that they're fit, the means that we're trying to present today. Again, we have the accounts payable policy, the contract management, and these are gonna be mostly internal policies as well. Now, our next steps, what we're focusing on, you see here, five phases. Two of them are, have been completed, which is phase one and phase two. Phase one pretty much was basically immediate, and we were supposed to meet with the departments, which we did. Ivan conducted a very good issue and analysis on meeting with the departments, identifying issues, doing a lot of research, analyzing. Phase two was pretty much entitled with distributing the information and identifying roles and expectations, right, from the departments, as well from the end user and internal service departments. We are currently working on phase three, which is establishing process, establishing processes based on the policies, develop implementation of workflows, making sure that we perfect or improve our processes and policies as well. Keep in mind, phase three, four, and five, we're trying to work within the next year, so hopefully, within the next year, we could provide a little bit more update as well. Now, keep in mind, these, these phases could potentially change, as well as we, we redefine responsibilities as well for our department with the end users, as well with the internal services department as well. And for that, we'll open it to any questions or concerns to you, Commissioners.
Information that you do mapping, that you do Six Sigma, I mean, how did you get to this point?
So that's a very good question. So the way that we've been able to collect most of this information, which is a collaboration with my co-partner, Ivan Garcia, is we do a lot of manual work, which is through obtaining the information manually, through Excel or the paid claims report, communicating with the departments as well. So pretty much has been done through data entry, as we should say, and being able to obtain that information, do a lot of, a lot of the research, you know, digging into those paid claims, looking at the invoices, looking at if there's any contracts associated to those invoices, you know? So a lot of those information that we've been trying to collect in that aspect. So a lot of it has been through, you know, using our access, Excel, you know, a lot of manual work, our ERP system as well, and also communicating, communicating with the departments. A lot of those, these services, we've had questions, especially through purchasing, they've done a very phenomenal job on, on guiding us, right? And, and for us to be able to understand a little bit more is, how is it that they maneuver those payments as well?
And it would be nice to, I know we started the Malcolm Baldridge and trying to understand process enterprise, and, you know, being able to do a mapping, and, and being able to say, this is the S's, and now this is where, you know, the changes that we're making, and, but whatever, however you do, if you could establish sort of a, a method to it.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we do anything else where we're trying to understand, you know, flows and process and all that, that we have a sort of one standard way of looking at it. And I know Betsy's very knowledgeable about, you know, Malcolm Baldridge, and, you know, going into a process to a process-focused organization, and, but the mapping, I think, would have helped me a little bit more to say, this is the S's, and then now this is the changes we're trying to make, so.
Absolutely, Judge.
If you could put that flow chart, if you have a chance to.
Thank you for that.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Anna, Commissioner, go later.
Thank you. Thank you for this. This is, this is exciting to see this level of analysis being done. I know that I have had conversations with, with Melissa and Betsy, just in my experience, which I know is just a tiny fraction of what all of our departments do here in Commissioners Court. But in, in my, my experience, working at the staff level in the Commissioners Office, specifically to, like, the gun buyback program, I was eye-opening in a number of ways, trying to navigate through the process of purchasing different services and goods for an event that was approved by Commissioners Court, that had line items, like, in the budget already dedicated to it, and having to justify expenses at every single level was really difficult. It was, in my opinion, extremely duplicative and time-consuming to have to go, again, for a, a program and an allocated budget that was already approved by Commissioners Court for specific line items, to then have to go to approvals from purchasing, to grants, to auditors, to budget, and sometimes, numerous times through those different levels, was really time-consuming. And then, and then still through admin, in some cases. And so was that analyzed in here, or is that planned to be analyzed at all?
So that was not part of the analysis, and we have talked about that, that we need a way to track from the time, like I say, I need to purchase X, from that point to even being able to, from that point to P.O. Is, like, that point to requisition, requisition to P.O., that, that is something we need to figure out a way to measure. Because right now, when I say I need X, that doesn't necessarily go right into the system. There's a lot of that back and forth, and sometimes it's not a product, sometimes it's a service. And so we do need a way to measure, how long does that preliminary time take? Because that is often some of our biggest hurdles.
Yeah, and I, you know, and just, just, again, a very, like, very narrow example, narrow scope compared to what I think a lot of our departments do daily. Just on one email string, for one event, for one purchase, having our auditor on there, our purchasing agent on there, our admin, administrative, chief administrator on there, and then, and then our grants team. I mean, I just think about the enormous workload that they have, and if they're having to get involved at the granular level for things like me trying to purchase food for an event, where we know we have to feed staff, I can't imagine them having to do this across the board, like, countywide. And, and, and just the resources the resources that that takes up. So I think that's, that's important to look at, and before we create new policies, look at policies that are already duplicative, right? So if we have an authorized purchase, do we, for food, right, do we need the county administrator to also approve that kind of thing? I think that could help a lot. And then, another example that I wanted to bring up was, my office was trying to purchase a newsletter subscription at the beginning of the year, and that took about six months, because we had to go through, I forgot, I forgot legal, right, the county attorney's office for all of this, too, has to check off a lot of things in addition to purchasing and the auditors and budget, right? So there's a lot of checkboxes, which is a good thing, right? It's, it's, it's a very secure way of purchasing things, but it could also be duplicative. In the case for the, the software, the newsletter subscription, we had to, my staff had to learn how to do cobblestone and upload a subscription contract, you know, the ones that you, like, have to check off when you're online trying to buy a subscription? We had to upload a contract and get, make sure legal could sign off on that, knowing that we can't reach out to, we can't ask for modification on this newsletter subscription from constant contact if our legal has an issue with it, right? It's not, these kinds of subscriptions don't work like other kinds of contracts. And so just trying to apply common sense things to these, and we've, I've talked to our purchasing agent, I've talked to our IT director, I've talked to Melissa about that, like, are there ways to streamline the kinds of things that, that are very, you know, maybe recurring, or that we're not the only department that uses these things? And so I don't know, again, if that was part, is that, if that's going to be part of this analysis, or if it can be, but I think that would be helpful.
It should.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you. Commissioner Butler, as Ms. Keller mentioned, so the focus of today was literally based on the paid claims analysis to help us start identifying where some of our hiccups are. But we definitely, we have a team behind us, we refer to them as your Operations Excellence Team, so we call them the OETs. Originally, we used to call them purchasing and grant coordinators, but I think it created some confusion. But we can expand our analysis, that's what the team is here for. Constant improvement is what we call this team. And so I think in order for them to be successful, in order for this organization to be successful, the relationships matter. The relationships we build with our internal partners and our end user departments matter, hearing from the court what you're looking for, what your feedback is, they can continue to go do the work that's needed to improve on all ends. So thank you for this feedback.
Thank you. Commissioner, go to another.
Thank you, Judge. So one of the things that, once you finish you, all the other phases that you're going to do, I, I'd like to see where the areas you all think that we need to improve and what are best practices. I don't see, I, I see the results of what you identified in the paid claims, but what should be our best practice? You know, I see the, on some of those, like, one out of six that are going 30 days and beyond is not, to me, is not acceptable. And so I, you know, I'd like, I'd like to see how we're going to improve that. And are, are we at the point where, whenever you guys report back, I want to see, are you at the point, does, what areas do you think that we need a more critical analysis like, like an audit? I don't know if you all are doing it at that level, or if it's something different we need to do. And I think later on, we'll discuss with the county attorney what avenues we have available. But this isn't about, you know, it shouldn't be about whether we're trying to get at people, we're just trying to improve and get better, and, and, one, compliance, and, two, operating best practices are even better. It, it's about efficiency. You know, unfortunately, county government is set up in just an inefficient way, in my opinion, okay? It's not like a school district, it's not like city council where they only have one elected body. We have several, and we have several different, you know, departments that can be run independently. And so in, in order for us to be able to do that, to have a best practice, I think we need to do some, you know, in-depth evaluations at the audit level, to make sure that we're operating and where we can, and within the guidelines, obviously, because we want to make sure, one, we're in compliance and that we're treating our vendors right. I, I know that there's been some issues, and I didn't see those coming up in this with respect to paying our professionals, like our attorneys and the expert witnesses and stuff like that. I, I don't see any of that in here. And I know we had some issues where, you know, a year or two in delaying and making these payments. That's just unacceptable, period. And it's, sometimes it's still happening, and what were those areas? I, I'd like to see a complete report on that. And we're, you know, if we need to address it by other personnel, then we need to do that, because that's just, that's just, to me, not acceptable. The other area that I think we need to look at, and that's really not within the purview of this, is that, and I, and I've discussed this with Joel about other issues with respect to, that some of the, some of these professionals don't even want to deal with us, because they're not paying them enough. And I'm talking about in the justice system area. And so we also need to take a look at that, that issue down the road, and if y'all will speak with Joel about that, we need to, and obviously, as well as with the, with the Council of Judges on this, so maybe we can get, get those issues involved. But I'm glad that we're doing this, because it's, it's high time we do this, we want to make sure that we, because otherwise, we're spending a lot of effort needlessly in having to, you know, repeatedly, like, you know, some of the issues that Commissioner Butler brought up, and, I mean, I'm sure all of us have had to deal with in purchasing things. You know, it's just, it's, 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 it bogs the organization down, where we can be doing other things. So I'm glad we're doing this, I'd, I'd like to see a, an expanded focus and see what we can do. And I think all departments, everybody in our organization, you know, Council of Judges, auditors, purchase, we all need to be cooperating together and do whatever it is we need to do to analyze this, and let's get this to where we're doing best practice. So, Judge, thank you.
And, you know, we, if you recall our discussions on, on Monday about efficiencies and things that we have to do, I can begin to tell you, the cost of inefficiency is just tremendous, and, and people don't realize that. So it covers two areas. One, the belief that the county is, we're, you know, too bureaucratic, and, and, you know, I think we need to let individuals in the community understand that we do some incredible things, but more than some organizations that I've, that I've been in. But I think that if we start looking at the cost of inefficiency, then you can open, open sort of the, the, you know, your, your, what you're trying to accomplish, your, your objectives, but I think if you look at, at inefficiency as part of it, and that's why I insist that if we have an administrative model, it covers everything, right? Because it covers in any type of inefficiency, and it allows you to, what you've heard here today, to then begin to be more specific about, okay, if, if I'm going to purchase something, what, what's the, you know, what has to happen, and what are some of the things? One of the things I know for a fact, and worked a lot with Process Enterprise, is that every single handoff is one more potential for a mishandle, every single handoff. So when you go from here to here, if you can, if you eliminate that, and you don't have to have that handoff, you eliminate the human error. And so that's, you know, that's a, a lot of things that we need to do, is eliminate, make it a little bit of foolproof, make sure that, that we understand how a process works. But I do recommend, if you do the mapping, and like right now, what Commissioner Butler said, have you mapped that, what she just said? And you start seeing all of these handoffs, and then you say, because it's one of the most common things in organizations is that, well, that's the way we do it, or that's the way we've done it forever. And so then we get very used to that. And so then you feel like, you know, it's okay to wait for two weeks, and then you'll, you'll make us efficiency as well, because then we understand where, where is our delay? Because as, as Betsy was saying, that if, if something comes back to my, to my desk, and then I sit on it for two weeks, and then we, we look at purchasing delaying and say, well, you know, they're not efficient, well, a lot of it might be us, the way we handle it ourselves. And then so, to me, it just makes it very clear, if I could see a mapping, I can really understand where some of the, the challenges are, and like I said, if you let go of the handoffs, it really simplifies things. But the cost attributed to that is just, I think one of the examples they gave was Progressive, because when, they had like, I don't know, 20 different things that happened when you were in an accident before the, the estimator came to you, and so they put a device where, when you're in a crash, it automatically sends it to the estimator, the estimator shows up there almost at the time of the accident, just like any other thing, and it, it was unbelievable, the 20, 30 things that used to happen by one movement, and they saved millions of dollars. So I think we have an opportunity here, one, to show our community how well we work things, you know, we have dashboards, we have, I mean, you know, our strategic planning, and, and I think we need to let them know that we're doing that, but within our organization, how do we become more efficient? So that we, and, and sometimes it could be millions of dollars of inefficiencies that you could save, so. I think we made a commitment that we're going to look at everything now and not wait for two years and say, oh, you know, we've got a, we've got an issue on our budget. But maybe there's some things that we can begin to eliminate and, and not have to do. It's, it'll be less people sometimes, it'll happen, when you do the process, it's less people. Or people get very surprised, you do it and it adds people, but now you're going to be 10 times more efficient and it's going to be cost-effective. But now you're using people in the right areas. So I really encourage it, and I mean, I get excited about strategic planning, but also for us to be able to say that we're a process enterprise-oriented organization is a big thing. It's, it's a big thing, so. And I know you, we've discussed this, and we've, you know, tried to look at an administrative model, but I think we're at that point, given that, that we have to be very good about how we run the organization, so I think this is, you're going to be excellent contributors to, to what we'd need to do to address some of the budget items that, having a bigger budget than we need to because of inefficiency.
Well, thank you, thank you, Court, for your investment in this team, the team behind you. This is just the tip of the iceberg, this is a focus that we're starting with, but it is definitely going to open up other opportunities for us. We know how important effectiveness and, and, and efficiency, not inefficiency, efficiency is to you all, and so this team is going to continue to take this back, work with our departments, and see how we can continue to improve.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Item 3E, receive and discuss a presentation and update from the bond performance team regarding the voter-approved bond projects in the capital improvement plan.
Judge, Commissioners, as you know, each special meeting, we're just giving an update from the team on how we're progressing through our bond projects. Again, I thank the team for all of their work and diligence in not only keeping the projects moving, but also updating the presentation and being prepared each month to give this update. And with that, I will turn it, oh, actually, I'm the first slide. Could somebody advance the slide for me? Thank you. So from administrative and financial updates, we're going, we continue ongoing monitoring and reporting to ensure transparency and compliance. The dashboard is being updated and maintained, it's available for the public on our transparency link from our homepage. And then county administration has had a couple vacancies in this area for strategic capital development. We'll be recruiting to fill the vacancies in the strategic capital management team over the next few weeks, and we will be also adhering to the hiring waiting period policy, but we are starting to move on those, those recruitments as well. And next slide, please. With that, I am happy to turn it over to Karen Davidson. Before we do, I do want to mention something related to procurement or purchasing, but not related to this item. We will brief the court on this during the September 15th update, but there was a correction. Our team made an error on the budget. I think we had previously showed an 8% increase in purchasing's budget. It's actually about a 3% to 3.5% increase, but those are due to things that occurred during the ARPA transitions and some staff electives that are not something in her control. She did meet the requirement to reduce her budget. So I wanted to publicly apologize to you, Karen, I'm sorry we did that, but, and I'll turn it over to you to move forward on the, the bond project.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Ms. Keller, for, for making that correction. Today, I want to present on where we're at in the procurements in the bonds, and so I have two on this slide, but I'm really excited about the first one. So we all know we're doing a construction manager at risk for the RFP, for the Office of Medical Examiner, and that's moving along wonderfully. And so on August the 13th, we had a pre-proposal meeting. If the court remembers, this pre-proposal meeting was really important, that they spoke with the architect, as well as the engineers, and Furney supported that, as well as the county attorneys, because if you remember the best practice that we're trying to implement here in our very first CMAR, is the actual contract that needs to be signed is going through the process along with the formal solicitation. So what we're hoping to do, Court, is to take out about a year of negotiating a contract on a bond project. So when we bring back the procurement, we'll be bringing back the contract for award, which is a wonderful process improvement, we hope to actualize it somewhere in January of 2026. So the pre-proposal was well-attended, and we have a lot of views in, in our bidding system from some really large contractors, but I want to invite everybody out there listening, there is time, these proposals are not due until September 11th. If you've not gone to the pre-proposal meeting, this is the very first CMAR, but it's the very first time that we taped it, videotaped it, put it on YouTube, and it's available for the entire public. So if you've missed the pre-proposal meeting, you still have time. It's on the website, the question and answer period is what we're, we're going to be issuing the amendment on next, but that's moving along wonderfully. We hope to bring back an, a update to the court around September 11th, to give you an update on what kind of proposals we've received and how we think that CMAR is going along. So we're really excited on that one. The second one is the Ascarity Park Administrative Building, which is a competitive sealed proposal, new instrument for us, Court, that is a brand-new instrument we're developing with the county attorney's office, and this is a construction project document that will no longer be just a competitive bid. So you all are used to seeing a design, and then a competitive bid, and then an award. What this will allow our Public Works Department is that it won't be just lowest bid. This will allow them to take other factors into consideration, and of course, we'll post that with the evaluation criteria, so everybody knows those factors and its weighted criterion. But they'll also begin to take other factors, the other, into effect other than just lowest bid. So this is, like I said, a brand-new instrument, the CMAR was our first instrument, now we're developing the competitive sealed proposal. And you're going to see that on these wonderful engineers and their different projects, where they want to implement that type of procurement methodology. So we're working diligently with the county attorneys to bring that.
Expensive, right? You get the lowest bid, and you feel that, that you have to go with that, but there's so many other factors, and you and I talked about it at our meeting this time, that there's so many factors that you have to look at, and having that one was always, I don't know, troublesome to just say, just because you're lower, that could avoid, you know, quality could, other factors didn't have to come into play, so thank you for that.
Thank you, and thank you to my assistant, who's working really hard on it, Ms. Elvia Hottig. So, okay, I'm going to, she's here, and I'm going to turn it over to our county attorneys, Ms. Eric. That was Alice.
Thank you. Hi, Erica. Welcome.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Eric Rosales, Nick Guy, Cleone, Assistant County Attorney. We have some exciting updates as well, since the last time I presented before the court. As Ms. Davidson shared, our Assistant County Attorney, Stephen Adiano, attended the pre-proposal meeting, which was great, he was able to share with the folks who, who were there, and then the folks who watched the video, that we are utilizing the AIA contract, which I think will be great news for these veterans, because it's one that they're very accustomed to. So he shared that will be part of that process with Ms. Davidson and her team. A few other, oh, sorry, didn't invest the slide, here we go. A few other big updates since the last time, for both the Ascada at the park, that's the overall project, and then animal, the animal shelter, both of those design contracts have now been drafted, are in the negotiation stage with the engineers and the designers. And so we expect to have that back to the court to be finalized within the next month. So that's an exciting update for that as well. In addition to that, the Coyote Park sublease, if you recall, that's the one we're working with Thorneo ISD, complex one, but that's been finalized. I know we're working diligently with Thorneo ISD to work that out for the, for the project. And these are just the major updates, we just continue to work with the team and Public Works and purchasing on the project. So thank you so much. If there's no questions for me, I'll turn it over to Public Works. Next slide, please.
There we go. Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Livia Arias with Public Works. I'll start off with the Escarate Park. As part of the legal updates, that's really the overall update for Escarate. We're working on that contract to, in hope to have that next month. After we have that contract in place, excuse me, after we have the design contract in place, we will reach out to the Commissioner's office to start setting up those public outreach meetings. For San Felipe, we have the, still also the contract negotiation, and we also anticipate to have this one completed next month. And as Ms. Davidson mentioned, we are using the competitive sealed proposal for this one also, just to make a note of that. For this update on the Gallegos Park to River Trail, El Paso Water did identify the trail that will be, the, excuse me, the parcel that will be used for the trail. So we are in contact with them. I've set up a meeting with the consultant. So now that El Paso Water has identified the trail, we have a clear vision of where we'll be crossing. El Paso Water does want additional details on what we propose to put on that trail. So once we have the consultant, we will provide him that additional information, and at that point, start drafting an agreement with them, too.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
All right. So we are not looking at a alternative to cross from Gallegos Park directly to the river, yet?
Yes, sir. That's the parcel that that was identified to do the crossing.
Right. Okay. Because I still see the...
Yes. I think...
This is still the original schematic.
Yes, and I can provide you the new route.
The new one?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, I think this is, just by the court, it's gonna be very difficult to do this, the proposed trail from Gallegos Park all along Bosque Road all the way to Vinton because of the electric pole lines that are in there. We'd be spending money on moving those without getting anything back for it. So it presents a situation where, and then additionally, going towards Vinton Road, there's an issue of where we were gonna put it. There's an irrigation ditch right at that corner. So I don't know where we were gonna put it, on which side of the irrigation ditch, so. Additionally, maybe we can make it on this side, but that land has been already leased by the Children's Botanical Garden. So a lot of issues that were presented, but I think we have a good alternative, and El Paso Water is working with us to make sure that we can still connect to the river from the park, and maybe even do some more improvements along that, because there's money in the project for lighting on the trail.
That's correct.
But there wasn't any money for landscaping, so maybe we can take advantage of that, those issues, and maybe put some other benches along that area. So I think that would be, it's gonna work out well if we get that done.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir, and we'll continue to work with them and give you updates on that.
Thank you.
On the Gallegos overall, we have the final proposal from the consultant. So we are, we submitted the contract for review to Legal, so that's where that's at. And on the Coyote Park, it's legal updated. We have that final draft to share with Thornillo ISD. We've also finalized our scope with the consultant. So we're looking at those two contracts to be finalized, the one with the consultant and the agreement with Thornillo ISD. For Estrella Park, we also did finalize the proposal on that. Something that I want to note is that we do, we will have lighting. I will talk to the consultant to see how we can bring the lighting sooner, probably make it the priority of the project. There might be an opportunity to do that before, as part of like a job order contract or something before we kick off, but let me get more information on that and see what we can do so we can bring the lighting a little bit sooner. For Estrella.
If you notice, the completion date of March 2029, that's a long time for people to play in the dark.
Yes, and just something to note, though, because we definitely want to do underground electric, because when we do the overhead electric, sometimes that's, it provides a negative impact, because when we apply for grants, they typically don't like overhead electric for grants, especially with Texas Parks and Wildlife. So we would be looking at doing underground electric. So if we're gonna start, you know, digging up for the infrastructure, we've gotta at least have a conceptual plan of, so we don't demo, reconstruct, and all that. So, but we'll look into that for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Harold Koots with Public Works. In Veterans Park, we're currently working with the water district for the conveyance details of the, for the property. We have been, had meetings scheduled to one, as a matter of fact, next week. We are expecting to receive the design proposal for the on-call architect, engineer for the remaining parks improvements this Friday for review. And coordinating with the Commissioner's office, a community meeting is planned for September 16th, a project update to the public and for their input. For Reisinger Park, we have been coordinating with the Commissioner's office as well regarding the community meeting, and it is planned for September 16th to provide the community project update and their input and insight for the park. We are expecting to finalize the pricing and scope with the contractor. At this time, the update, the proposal may be necessary from the community meeting input with the procurement and the legal process anticipated to commence afterwards. We are expecting to finalize, oh, sorry, apologies, Alguedulce Park improvements. We are also finalizing the pricing and scoping with the contractor. For this same project, we need to coordinate with you, Commissioner Holgi, for that public meeting based on availability.
Great, yes, definitely.
Parks Park to Mission Ridge Walking Trail, we are in receipt of the A&E proposal for the design study for that corridor selection, and that has, we're initiating the legal and procurement teams in this process and hope to get it awarded in the coming months. Sparks Park improvements. Coordination is ongoing and continues with the legal regarding the lease with Region 19 for Head Start facilities at this location. There is a scheduled meeting with Region 19 next week.
Okay, great, thank you.
The Sparks Park project will plan to utilize A&E to master-design the park improvements once we have the solution, the progress forward regarding the Head Start. And the part that's gonna include also a portion of Project A7, the Countrywide Hike and Bike Trails, and we wish to incorporate them to provide a complete project for the community. County Parks Hike and Bike Trails, the Westway project. Sorry. Oh, I just said that. County Parks, for the Westway project, basically, we need to finalize the pricing and scope with the contractor. We need to coordinate with you, Commissioner Coronado, in regards to the public outreach phase.
Yeah.
And provide them the approach and their input. We'll be working with your office.
Yeah, we're just talking about that with my staff about doing, trying to move up these meetings, yes.
Wonderful. And likewise, after that public input, if there's tweaking or alterations to the approach, but we will commence with the final proposal preparation with the contractor on that one. Westway Park is very similar in the same discussion. Actually, they mirror each other, sir. And that, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to highlight a few of the items that we saw under Harold's projects, in the co-op, thank you. Under the co-op ones, you're starting to see that the times are starting to change. So like, a lot of Harold's projects moved up almost a year, kind of reflecting those gains we got from using the cooperatives that purchasing recommended.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
So as we move forward on to A18 Sports Park Field Lighting Modernization, we do have an upcoming event. We just saw this recently last month regarding, you know, awarding the contract and the revisions and everything that came in to get this ball moving. We are having that kickoff event in September, so we hope to see you all there, September 29th. Be there, be square. But we'll see everyone there. And then that will kick off construction, which will allow us to, sorry, that was construction kickoff. The actual construction team will be there on September 29th. The event's on the 26th. And the project completion will be for December 2025. And all this will be coordinated continuously with the sports park staff to make sure we're not impacting their operations.
That kickoff, by the way, is on my birthday, September 26th.
Ah, so you bring the cake. Got it.
No, I'll bring, I'll bring.
Well, I won't be here. I'll be in a conference in Waco, but no.
We'll save your cake.
Save me.
We'll eat your cake, then. Yes, okay, that's exciting. The next one we have is the Escarate Park building, the building build-out. This one is, you know, it started in 2024, the design did, so we're actually closer in finalizing this design. We have a few little items that we're wrapping up, coordinating with procurement and legal, which you heard earlier from both teams. The legal team is preparing the new contract that would be associated with the CSP, the Competitive Sealed Proposal, while procurement is putting together all their specifications, front-end documents that go in with the bid. So we expect this to be ready to go for an official submittal with procurement in September of 2025, and then it'll go through the entire process from there. My final project with you today is gonna be the county animal shelter. We do have a proposal from the selected design team that has been reviewed and negotiated. We are working with Legal to finalize that draft, and as Erica mentioned earlier, we do have a draft copy that's going between us, and so we're ready to get this conversation going with the design team and make sure we're all on the same page and get this to you hopefully during the month of September as well.
I have a question.
And following that, we'll be coordinating with your staff for the community meetings. And this one's a little exciting, because we're actually gonna start community meetings a little early to get all the, all the interested parties in the room a little early, hear what they have to say. The design team will be a part of this, and getting community feedback in the early stages. So we're looking at about three community meetings to get an initial read, and then kind of more of a concrete idea of what the design team has in mind, and then the final presentation to show them what's coming. And that'll be the approach.
My question is about community engagement with the animal shelter.
Yes, but we'll definitely reach out as soon as I have a contract.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Ferny had done this with Infrastructure Services. For the Office of the Medical Examiner, the project is in progress. Like both Karen and Erica mentioned, we did have our pre-bid conference meeting for the construction manager at risk this last week. We did receive some questions, and our team is in the process of answering those questions so we can prepare, I guess, to push those out as addendums. On the site, our design team is progressing with the site survey, as well as the site analysis for the geotechnical services for the project. And at this time, everything's running along fairly on schedule, and at this time, we're open to hear any questions or concerns moving forward. I think that concludes our presentation. If you have any more, any other questions or specific concerns?
Just so exciting. I mean, and I hope you feel that way, that, and I think the community thanks you for, you know, this information. They need to make the connection with, we, you know, take that step to vote something like that is important, but then they see the results and they see the effort that's being made. Because I think there's more things in the future that we'll have to propose, and if they don't see, if we're efficient, that we're doing the right thing, they become very hesitant. On the other hand, when it's done properly, you could always go back. I mean, I know that we paid a big price for the arena not being built, you know, and they felt like, well, we give you the money, and you guys fight over it, and then, you know, nothing happens. And so they have this kind of impression that when they vote, necessarily is it gonna happen. And so this is very important, the credibility for the county of what you're doing is outstanding. I've gotten a lot of comments about going into the dashboard and understanding, and that takes a lot of pressure off of us, because they used to come to us to say, where are you at? Now I could say, well, go to the dashboard, you know, look it up.
Nice.
And so, thank you. I mean, this is very, but I do hope you feel that excitement. Typically, we're trying to get out of a hole, we're trying to figure, fix things, and this is something we're doing that we've all said is generational. I mean, you know, our constituents and our kids' kids are gonna be able to enjoy all these things for many, many years. And so I hope there's a sense of excitement. I know there's a sense of pressure all the time, but I do hope that you feel what you're doing. The big picture is something incredible for the community, so I hope you sense that, so.
I had some questions. I just waited till the end, sorry, but I wanted to go back to the Escarate Park slide. I think it's slide five, but...
You got it on the screen? Oh, there you go.
Just real quickly, so I just want to make sure like that we're talking about the lake recovery program and the lake enhancements, and they're two different, two different projects. I mean, they definitely relate to each other, but this Escarate Lake Enhancement, it's listed here, is not what we're talking about when we're talking about the, when we're, before dredging the lake, or, you know, cleaning the lake, or the project that was, that's gonna be funded by the tax note, right? So when we have our December public meeting scheduled for the overall park improvements, and then there's gonna be a lake meeting later, I think, in the fall as well, I think it's important to make sure that we're clear with our communications with the public that, and how we're approaching, I guess, the suite of different projects that are going on at Escarate, so they know, we can set expectations, right? And so when we talk about the Escarate Lake Enhancements here, what are we talking about?
Commissioner, yes, to clarify that, that we are looking at Escarate as a whole. So the one consultant will take care of all of the items that are listed, to include the enhancement at Escarate, at the lake. However, it is separate funding, so, but as the consultant will take care of all of it. If you wish to have additional meetings for the lake, we can do that, but when we do the community meetings, we were hoping that we could do it for the entirety of the park.
Okay, so Escarate Lake Enhancements that are listed here do include the project that was approved through the tax, the tax note?
Yes.
That's what you're saying? Okay.
So if I could add, so the estimate does not include both, I don't believe. I think this is just the bond.
Right. That's just the bond.
And so that's, that's just the bond portion. That is a different dollar amount for the enhancements. But we did think that rather than have conflicting consultants or... But we did think that rather than have conflicting consultants or work, that if it could be, both be done under the same umbrella so that it is streamlined and works together. And it takes into account how each project is impacting the others. That all the community input is taken into consideration.
Okay, so, so does that, you know, because we, we, we approved the funding for the, for the lake enhancements in twenty twenty three, and it's now twenty twenty five. So the, the timeline for all of the projects at the park are, I guess we're, we're kicking off in, project construction kickoff is July twenty twenty seven. Is that, is that like the other stuff or is that the lake? So we're going to, so the people aren't going to see construction on the lake that was approved in twenty twenty three until four years later?
Uh, no, that, that is for the overall Escarate. And I can probably, on our next update, I can provide a more broken down timeline.
Okay.
Because if you recall from the lake presentation, we were looking at doing a lot of the enhancements for the lake, like the wells, possibly this year.
Right.
So you would see some of that before you would see the enhancements for the entire park.
Right, okay, so that's, that's, that's what I want to make sure that we're very clear about because it's confusing to me here saying, okay, we do have the Escarate Lake enhancements under this, on, you know, under this project, but we're not kicking off until July twenty twenty seven? So thank you, thank you for the, for the, for the clarification on that. I also had a constituent come in and I don't know if there, if there is room in here or if it's even possible. But, you know, they've, and we brought it up in the past in, in some, some strategic planning. And, but, but with, with the concept of, of, you know, having access for RVs or, or space, space to, to install slabs or, or areas where RVs could, could, could come in. Yeah, overnight, yeah, overnight RVs. I mean, it could be a revenue generator, generator. You know, it could tie in with the, the heritage tourism efforts in South Central. Could tie in with the sports tourism efforts that we have countywide. And, you know, Coliseum events as well. If, if there's a, and there, a way for us to look at within these projects, something, something like that. I'm not sure if it's too late or if it's something that we can look at. But I wanted to bring that up because I did have a constituent come in and talk to me about it.
There were, there were some other projects. You may recall back when we went to the original, when we started with over seven hundred million dollars worth of projects that we took to the Bond Advisory Committee. We were not able to, within our, within our budget, we were not able to include all of the projects. So that is not included. But it is also a project, like, as a matter of fact, I can remember back as long as probably ten years ago, working on this, we're, we're interested in this. We want to do, be able to do, have those kinds of spots. I even already have like my picked out area of where in the park I'd like to have this. But it's not in there yet. It is something we will continue to work on and, and even analyze what the cost versus revenue would be to be able to do that type of, and, you know, and realistically, like what's, without interfering with other park projects or other park space, like how many could we do? What, what are we talking about?
No, I, I appreciate that because I, you know, having been involved in these very difficult conversations, especially the last couple of weeks regarding our budget and, and, you know, possibly making cuts and, you know, parks being seriously considered for, for, for cuts. You know, we need to be looking for investments that would also help pay for, you know, help the park pay for itself so that it, and, and that's may, that may be something, an option that there would be an upfront investment. But, you know, in, in the future, it could be an enterprise.
And the other, the other thing I heard from your meetings, your, the public meetings as well is until we can get those sites built, if we could start back our campouts, even a couple campouts a year, Norma, would be, I think, I mean, I know the ones.
I think we've been doing two, about two a year, right?
We were doing one. We've done it, we've only done it twice and I've attended and they are so popular and so fun. So I really do hope we can. Yeah, so we could, that's something we could do in the meantime until we can, and try to increase those until we can have permanent sites with like electric and water.
And Betsy, is this an opportunity? We wanted to sort of kick off the maybe the Scott at the lends itself for more than I think any other situation for public-private kind of. And so is there a, an organization that, you know, around the country, they have these places for RVs?
Like KOA?
Like K, that's, I couldn't remember the name, but, and I, I remember meeting one of the gentlemen that, that owns them and runs almost all of them. But they love these kinds of opportunities. And so I'm wondering if we could, you know, sort of look at that as a possibility?
Sure.
Because I think that's a little more easier kind of hanging fruit. But then to look at what other public-private things can we do there at the lake?
We could definitely do that. We'll need a, we'll, we'll need to work with our bond council to get a financial analysis because there's some rules about having private investment where there's debt, where there's some restrictions on us. But there, but it, it still may be possible. We just needed to get the analysis done. And then we would have to put together a scope and have some dialogue about what those relationships would look like.
And I think it'd be a good return for them as well. I mean, just to.
Yes, sir.
I learned that, the Torneo Bridge on the Mexican side, that's actually a privately owned company. And they're waiting to eventually get money back from, from the fees. And so that surprised me because that's a big wait and a big investment to wait for a return. But so I thought maybe there's smaller opportunities that we could do that. Commissioner Coronado?
Are you finished, Commissioner Stott?
With, with the, with this part, yes, I have some questions and comments about the other parts.
I was just going to add on there that, you know, I really think we need, do need to take advantage. And that, you know, you brought it up. What I was going to bring up is not just the camping area, but maybe also bringing in some of these like tiny log cabins that we can rent out and one-bedroom or two-bedroom ones. I know that we maybe ought to reach out to, I'm trying to remember the county where South Padre is that they have. I've visited their park. I mean, they, 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 they get revenue from that area. I, I know we don't have the Gulf right next to us, but we have a lake.
There's a several.
And I think, I think, I think the people would be very receptive in our community to taking advantage of that. And we can start, you know, generating money. And why, why can't we use some of the money that was going to be used for the lake to maybe do this camping and these tiny log cabins? Why can't we divert some of that?
Most of the money that we had set aside for the lake will be used for these enhancements. The enhancements are about six million, six, Lydia, do you remember the exact amount?
I don't know the exact amount, but I think it was close to, it was a little closer to seven.
And we have about eight?
Six.
Well, now we have less because we used portions of it to do the studies.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Okay, well.
No, that, that, that was also.
Wishful thinking.
Yeah, that was also one of the concepts that, that my constituent had brought was, you know, he, he brought in a little map and was proposing putting little like tiny homes or like cabins on the, on the south side of the park, you know, kind of where the, where the duck pond is and, and, and that area that's underutilized, right?
Yeah.
So I think we can continue to look at that. But my next, my, my next question was on slide twenty. It's the, 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 the building that we're, that we're putting up at Escarate. You know, one, one of the, one of the things that we've been talking about is we, we just learned about a possible Echo El Paso grant for trees where they may need to, a place to plant trees while they, while they grow larger. And that's something, I don't know if, if we can work with, with parks and agri-life on a place at Escarate, maybe with, you know, close to, close to the, this extension building that we're going to be putting in. And, and I don't know if the new park building, if that new building affects the area where the garden is or, or if it needs to be coordinated. But just want to kind of know, you know, what we may be allowed to discuss and with whom when it comes to other ideas that may be coming forth like that.
So on the tree planting, we do have an area
Right.
for that. As far as the, the garden and where this sits, I don't believe this specifically impacts the garden, Lydia, or Melina and Harold.
No, this, uh, this building will sit just adjacent to it. So as you come out of the building, it's going to be to your right and the gardens will remain as is. So we got it as close as possible to that without impacting parking too much.
Okay. Yeah, because I'd like to look at, look into that possible partnership with Echo El Paso as well. I think it would be.
We also have.
We'll, we'll reach out to get their contact information, Commissioner?
Yeah, I can have Sito briefly a little more, a little more on the, on, on what we're talking about, but.
Thank you.
The improvements for the building also include like a little bit of an outdoor employee like lounge area. So that could be an area if they'd like to plant the trees there, we could, we can work that out as well.
Okay, great. And then the last, the last thing that I wanted to mention is on, on the animal shelter. I'm wondering if it's, I just want to make sure that we start talking about, you know, the, the, the MNO. And I don't know if we need to talk about that in budget on, on the fifteenth, but just the, the MNO impact that's going to stem from this project. And maybe even the medical examiner's office. I don't know if we're expanding staff for the medical examiner's office too because we're expanding space. But I just want to make sure that, that, you know, and this could, this conversation could apply to all the bond projects, right? Like what MNO impact are the bond projects going to have? You know, but this one I think is different because it assumes that, and, and it implies programmatic expansion more so than, than any other bond project.
Correct. And we do have a team working on that from Crystal to Joel to our budget team. We, we do have a team working on making sure we've taken all that into consideration and are working on a, a proposal and a plan for that.
Okay.
The, the animal shelter is definitely the largest impact. We will have some offsets, but not, not complete. But we will have better animal services. We will also have some revenue. There will be some revenue from this as well. But we are working on that and we'll be able to present that information in one of our upcoming updates. There are other impacts, not as much as like inside the medical examiner's office, but the building maintenance and the keeping, like the janitorial, that there may be impacts in other areas in other county departments. We will also price doing it internally versus externally, but we will bring that information back to the court in one of our upcoming updates.
Okay. And then, and then last question that I, that I had was, so a lot of these projects we're doing with the CMAR, that's still a construction company. And, and so I'm, I'm, so we have in, in, we have in-house project managers is how, is how we're.
That's correct.
Is how, is how we're running this, these projects, right? Instead of outsourcing the project management to, to a firm, right?
That's correct, Commissioner, yes.
Okay. Because I, you know, talking to people that I know in the construction business, it's important to have project management to make sure that they, you know, because we, for example, on Monday, we saw, but we keep seeing change orders on, on projects and things like that. And so had, I guess the, the idea is like, how do we get away from having to deal with all those change orders and being able to manage a project, you know, and making sure it's, you know, on time and under budget, you know, and possibly even saving money? Because, you know, they may come to us and say, oh, you, we need, we need this much for this, for this project, but it's up to us to, I guess, it's our project managers that are, that are being basically our agents and, and looking out for the county and, and making sure that things are, are being done.
And sometimes.
We're not getting fleas, basically.
Commissioner, if I can add, sometimes it's hard to predict because we don't know the underground of the facility where we're working on. So like, for example, that change order on the park, we were not anticipating to have some of those lines in there. Additionally, you know, we had that driveway. And in looking at the paperwork that we had, we did not identify anything that gave us information that it could be there. They went back and dug up some information and they shared it with us. So unfortunately, we don't know the past of the areas. And, you know, some of our facilities are very old. So you are going to see, as much as we hate, we hate them to the change orders. But we do have project managers that are, have oversight of our projects. And that's a significant savings to the county. If we were to hire additional project managers, and we've had some quotes, it's very expensive.
Yeah, okay.
And so, and, you know, something else that I wanted to share that I think it's important that you all know, we're ahead of schedule on all our projects. And hopefully, I don't think at this point, we've seen anything that's going to change our budgets. But unfortunately, with the tariffs that we're seeing, we might see those increases. And so we're working real hard to execute these projects as soon as possible so that we don't have to deal with those additional costs.
Right, because if you, if you're doing a CMAR, those, they, they would absorb those costs, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Additionally, we have oversight by the, the architect because they design these projects or the work. And so they're all so responsible. So that's a savings also. So there's two people that have oversight, our architect and our engineers.
Okay.
Just wanted to share that with you. Thank you so much.
If I can add a few more key highlights, kind of the team's been working really well, but those are a lot of the behind-the-scenes issues we handle. By the time you're seeing a change order, we've already given a good fight. We've already negotiated it down. We've, you know, had them point the finger wherever they need to go, whatever the case needed to be in order to negotiate to the number you see in front of you once it gets here. The other items you don't see, but it, it's happening, for example, proposals. We don't, we don't just take the architect's word or the design team's word. We, we go through them, we go through each line item, verifying, you know, the amounts correct versus hours, hourly rate. So we go through a lot of the items with a fine-tooth comb. So that by the time it arrives at your desk, you don't, you, you, we hope you don't have those doubts anymore and that you know that they've been thoroughly vetted by the team at this point.
Great, thank you.
Anything else?
I think that, I think those are all the questions that I had. Thank you. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you. Great job. Appreciate it.
Thank you all. Thank you. I can't stress enough how we need to stay on, on top of this and get it, and get it done. I think the public is expecting us to do that. Thank you all.
Yeah, and I think that's why it's so important, that first event that we're having at the sports park, just to remind the public that it's been less than a year since you approved these projects and the first one is going to be completed now, so.
I agree.
Yeah.
Item three F. Receive a presentation, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the eighty-ninth Texas Legislative Second Called Special Session and the one hundred nineteenth U.S. Congress if needed.
Judge, can we take a two-minute break?
Sure.
Lisa, we're going to take just a short break.
Lisa, we're going to take a short break, okay?
Commissioners Court will recess for five minutes.
Thank you.
It is eleven twenty-five AM.
Is that right? Yeah.
Yeah, we'll bring it in here to begin the process.
Go ahead.
Okay, Commissioners Court has reconvened to special open session. We are on item 3F. Receive a presentation, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the 89th Texas Legislative Second Called Special Session and the 119th U.S. Congress if needed.
Good morning Judge and Commissioners.
I can barely hear you.
We can't hear you, yeah.
I'm so sorry, let me try again, move closer to my computer. Is that better? I know my computer is getting old.
Yes, it's better.
The mic may not work.
Miguel, can you turn up it on our end?
Go ahead, speak again.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
I'll try to speak louder. A little better?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, perfect. I have an update on, now we are on the second called special session. As you might have seen on the news, the Governor, or I guess both chambers adjourned, signed a die on the first call session and on Friday, last Friday, and then right away they started the second one. The Governor issued a new proclamation for a second session largely, largely the same as the first one with 19 agenda items as of Friday when we posted this agenda, but then he added a few more items to the call as well. So we're tracking all of that, all of those. And an update on redistricting, as you might have seen yesterday, the House voted on the maps. I don't think that's what was told to the Democratic members who were breaking quorum. I believe they had promised them that they will, they would take action on the central Texas flood funding for the victims first, and then they would do redistricting. But they, since there was a call in the House for those members that were breaking quorum, I think the Speaker changed his mind and they decided to take up on House Bill 4 first. And they did not take any amendments yesterday. It was a very long day, a very long debate, but it ended up passing along party lines. And so the maps were approved by the House and I expect the Senate would do the same and pass the same maps that would essentially create five new, or would give five districts for Republicans to pick up. Any questions on this slide? Go to the next one please. I wanted to put all the items around the second called session from the Governor. Obviously priorities on redistricting, but there's some other bills that we're tracking. And then I had to amend the backup because some hearings got posted this morning, a few hours ago. I think an hour before we started our meeting. And they posted hearings for tomorrow, so we can go to the next slide please. I think the backup was updated. Hope so. With the hearings for tomorrow, is there another slide? If not, I have them on my end. Oh, there you go. So Ways and Means will be meeting at 10:00 a.m. or upon adjournment of the House to hear some bills. These two are of interest to the county. House Bill 17 by Meyer, this one is relating to the requirement, requirements regarding notice of certain property tax related information to be provided by taxing units and appraised districts. So it would require school districts, taxing units, certain special districts to provide mail notices to each property owner rather than relying only on the newspaper publication and to include new comparative tax information in their budget and tax rate hearings beginning and January 1st of next year. It adds formulas requiring notices to show how proposed collections compare to prior year levies adjusted for population growth and inflation or enrollment growth for school districts. The Comptroller would be publishing the official inflation rate annually. In Monday's expanded disclosure language in tax rate notices, appraisal district property tax databases and water district hearing notices linking those proposed revenues to population or enrollment trends. And then Senate Bill 10, this one has already passed the Senate and it's going to have its hearing now on the House side. Also tomorrow, I know this is of particular concern to the county. This one is the one that would lower the voter approval tax rate multiplier for big counties from three and a half percent to two and a half percent. So for all the counties that have a population over 75,000. And then the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee is also meeting at the same time, 10:00 a.m. or upon adjournment to hear these two bills. House Bill 73 by Bell. This one will limit our annual total expenditures by capping the spending growth to the greater of the previous fiscal year's total expenditures or that amount adjusted upward by the sum of the state's population growth rate and inflation rate as calculated every year by the LBB, the Legislative Budget Board. Expenditures may exceed this cap only if approved by voters in a uniform election or if a state disaster is declared that is affecting that jurisdiction with the disaster related spending capped at the actual incurred costs. It also excludes bond proceeds, grants, donations and gifts from the expenditure limit. It requires municipalities and counties to post a clear publicly accessible taxpayer budget summary online or otherwise within 20 days after budget adoption, including total budget amounts, categorized expenditures such as public safety, health, transportation, and a taxpayer impact statement showing how fees and property taxes for a typical resident rate payer with comparisons to prior years. The proposed budgets must also be summarized and posted 20 days before the public hearings. And then HB 46 by Tepper, I made a mistake on this slide. I think I was in a hurry because the hearing got posted really like without notice. And I copied the wrong caption. So the bill caption for this one should read relating to a limit on political subdivision expenditures. So not this one. This is another bill that I don't believe it impacts us as we cannot charge impact fees. But HB 46 by Tepper relating to a limit on political subdivision expenditures. What this one would do is limit our annual total expenditures to the prior year spending or the prior year spending adjusted for the combined population growth and inflation, whichever is greater. It allows a political subdivision to exceed this cap only with two thirds voter approval at an election held on a uniform election date. Again, it excludes grants, gifts and disaster relief costs from revenue and expenditure totals and requires a yearly public posting of growth rate calculations and authorizes the Attorney General to enforce compliance through court action. So these four bills, we will be tracking tomorrow in the hearings. If, I think everything is captured in our value statements, but I could also entertain a motion to, a motion to oppose or drop cards if nobody is coming to us. And I know it's short notice, it was just posted this morning again. So I'm not sure if any member of the court is available to, to come testify. We can register a position tomorrow, that's what I can do.
Could you read me the bill number for the last one again? Is that the right bill number on the screen?
No, it's the right bill number on the screen, it's the wrong caption. So House Bill 46 by Tepper.
Okay, thank you.
But the caption here is wrong, I apologize. I was in a rush to get this slide up and running. I, I believe these are the only four bills of interest that are going to be heard tomorrow. And I can drop opposition cards and, and just talk to the committee members before the hearing. Or this afternoon, I can head over to the Capitol and talk to them. And then, we, I can also go to the next slide, but the next slide is about congressional action, so not on the state. So as you can see on the backup, there's some letters attached outlining the concerns that we have with the East Montana Detention Facility. I want to thank Commissioner Butler for helping with these drafts and helping me put all this together. There's four to send to our congressional members, Senator Cornyn, Senator Cruz, Congresswoman Escobar and Congressman Gonzalez, and then one to the Secretary of the Department of Homeland Security, Kristina. And if so, we could entertain a motion to send these letters to, to these recipients.
We have a motion by Commissioner Coronado to send the letters, second by Commissioner Butler. The voting is open.
My vote is aye.
Thank you Commissioner Stott.
Thank you so much. I don't know if there are any questions on tomorrow's hearings.
Judge. Voice is fading again, one more time.
Oh, are there any questions on tomorrow's hearings?
I, I don't know if the court has a question, but when I read that HB 46 language, I'm, I'm curious if anyone's been running fiscal impacts or on that? Because it allows you, it's either your expenditures for the prior year or your expenditures from the prior year times population growth and inflation growth. Which we never are anywhere near that amount of growth. So that would actually give us the ability to have expenses much greater than we have now.
Is it not the state's population growth or is it the jurisdictions?
Even, but it's, even taking population growth, just our inflation? I just, I'm really curious if there's been some, I'm looking here to see if there's any research on the, the proposal, but I am, I think we need a little more research on that HB 46.
HB 46, okay. We can hold off on 46. And then on 73, I know that our bond counsel also sent us an email this morning flagging that, that maybe we should pitch this when we're talking to the committee members that trying, that tying our levy growth to statewide population growth does not make sense with so many fast growth political subdivisions in Texas. And there's also no definition of what, what it means like all available sources of revenue. Because it could be construed like too broadly to include one-time revenues such as grant funding, insurance proceeds, CO or tax, no proceeds.
And there is a problem with HB 46 too in just even the timing. Because you don't have, you're supposed to take the, the current, preceding, all available, let's see, I'm sorry. All available sources of revenue in a fiscal year may not exceed the greater of. And so you, you don't know what your current, you take your current fiscal year and multiply it by, but you won't have your current fiscal year completed numbers by the time you're doing the multiplying. So there's challenges in the way it's written.
We will communicate with the members, I'll talk to our lobby team also to see if they can help communicate to the members of the committee. And I know we have a member of our delegation in Ways and Means. So Commissioner, I mean, sorry, Representative Perez, Vince Perez is in the Ways and Means Committee. So I've been talking with his staff this morning to just let them know, hey, SB 10 is a big concern to the county. But the other two are in the IGA Committee where we don't have any member of the El Paso delegation that could help there.
Okay. And the rate that you multiply by is the, you add the product of the population growth and the inflation rate. So it's, it's to me less restrictive, but it does not make, it's not logical. Okay, thank you.
I have a few comments on, on our legislative. One of the things I think we need to reach out to our legislative delegation is our 915, our 91, your emergency district rather, is in serious need of requesting additional funding. I don't know if they've, if you've been looking at it, but if nothing is done, I mean, thanks to the great financial management, our 9, our emergency district, they're able to maybe carry through because of their fund balance that they've been saving. But it's critical that we get the legislature to give them an approval to go up 25 cents. I think they're at 50 cents right now, that they tag on to the phone lines. The, the income has been steadily decreasing on the landline, so that's basically gone out. But now on the others, that's where they're getting the major funding for them. And it's really tied to emergency services, including what they're dealing with right now for the central Texas flooding that happened. And so I think, you know, I've reached out to Representative Gonzalez, Mary Gonzalez about that issue. She says she's trying to see that, you know, she says that the, obviously that, you know, they don't want to take it up as a standalone bill. But she's hoping that maybe they can get it attached to one, as a rider to one of the other legislation that they're trying to push in this. And it's, and if they're, and if they're working on this issue with respect to improving the emergency services, this is one thing where, you know, and it's not just our district, it's all districts in the state that really need this extra funding. And so I think we should, you know, one, send a letter to our delegation or get maybe our lobby team involved in getting some headway into this. That, number one. Number two, I'd like to see where we are on our, I know it's going to take a while, but where we are in the report regarding the fire hydrant issue in our county. Because that's also another item that, since the Governor's made it a water infrastructure priority that we really need to focus on that. And you know what, the judge and I had met with the fire marshal. They told us it wasn't just in our community, it's a statewide problem. And just recently, we noticed something happening in our neighboring county in New Mexico where they had a, a problem exactly with that. And one of the houses just completely burnt down because of a failure of one of these water hydrants where they hooked up to. And so I think, you know, it's happened a couple of times in our county. And so I think we really need to, you know, try and focus on this and get some headway with our lobby team and our legislative delegation. Like I said, Representative Mary Gonzalez is trying to see what she can do with respect to these issues. I know it's happened in your precinct, Commissioner Olgin, and so it happened in mine. I don't know about Commissioner Butler's, but that we've had these issues come up on, on fire hydrant problems. And so I really think we should pay attention to this now that it's, you know, it's completely on our radar now. And so I'd like for us to focus, have that as one of the focuses on our legislative agenda coming up, so.
Will do Commissioner. I think the next step could be to, to have our lobby team schedule a meeting with the Governor's office to see if this fits within what he's requested in, or made a priority with water funding, water infrastructure funding. And maybe we can get some guidance from the Governor's office. That way we can assure that, that they, that it's on the radar and that they support the initiative. If it's a statewide problem, then we should get them involved. So I'll ask them to request that meeting.
Great, appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just, Norma, where are we on, getting some kind of an idea on those issues in the water hydrants in the county and the outline areas really?
I think our lobby team was working on, on that. Did Rep Gonzal, did Vice Chair Gonzalez give any direction as to what we can do?
No, but we, we just on our own, before we even reached out to Representative Gonzalez, we were trying to look at the areas in our own, here in the county who had responsibility for this, for higher hydrants outside the El Paso city limits.
I think we found where Anthony, it was different, different utilities had responsibilities.
Yes, depending on the owner, for example, in our water system, we have our own fire hydrants. The ones in Anthony were supplied by the wells. And those are not ours.
Right.
And so I talked to John Baloo and he's the one that told me that. Those are supplied water by some wells and they're also not responsible for those areas.
Okay, so I, I just want to see if we can get a, a report on all our outline areas so we can indicate to our lobby team, hey, look, this is where the issues are. They don't have funding to be able to, you know, like our emergency service districts, they don't have the funding to, you know, test these. And so some of these municipalities that have responsibility for it or don't. I, I just want to find out and how we can then address some legislation to help us with that. If they're not going to do it, then maybe we can get special funding on a creative district to just handle these issues of maintaining our fire hydrants in the outline and small municipalities areas. Because I really think we need to do something about it. I think, you know, we're, we're going to have problems come up and, you know, I just, I just, this is a super safety issue I think for us to do. It's just, you know, it's happened several times already and it's even happening in New Mexico. That they hook up and no water pressure. So I, I really think we need to pay attention to this.
We'll work with the smaller municipalities and, you know, Paso Water, Lower Valley Water District and see what we can find out. We have records of all our fire hydrants and location and, but we'll see what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Judge, would you like to go ahead and go on to the next item Judge?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay. Item 3G. Receive a presentation regarding the impacts of the recently adopted tax rate on the FY 2026 budget.
Thank you Miguel and Alexis. Good afternoon Judge, Commissioners, Betsy Keller, County Administrator. We wanted just to follow up after Monday's tax rate adoption to go over some recommendations about what that additional revenue would do for our budget. We basically want to show you four options and I'm going to give you the bottom line up front. I recommend option four. And the reason why I'm going to recommend option four is there are so many things that are uncertain right now. There are many things going on at the federal level, there's many things going on at the state level. state level. We do not realize the full impacts of all of those items yet. Everything from the impact of SB 9 to the items that are on the ballot for November to how the new exemption in property tax, if that passes, how that could impact us. If additional federal funding cuts come in, there's, there's just so much going on right now. And there are so many things we did this year and last year to try to get through our budget. We've relied heavily on our reserve, we have relied heavily on one-time areas to borrow from. And if we, if we do anything other than option four, I am really concerned for the impact for next year. And so I'll explain a little bit about the options. I'll show you all four, but we're just looking for some direction, not action today, but some direction. And we will then incorporate that into the budget we bring back on September 15th for your adoption. So as you know, we adopted a, the 2024 tax rate on Monday. And that tax rate, from what we had in our budget book, it generated about $28.3 million more than what we had projected in revenue. And so on Monday, the option I showed is one of the things that you could do with that is option one, which was reimburse ourselves and get us up to a fund balance of 6%. Recover from some of our one-time reimbursements, start restoring CIP more, personnel contingencies, economic impact fund. That was option one. That was what we showed on Monday. Option two, after we looked at this further, is to restore fund balance up to 7%. Recover from, again, some of our one-time allocations that we've given, and then restore CIP. Option three is get fund balance to 8%, recover some from one of these, some of these one-time reimbursements. And then option four is put it all towards fund balance. And the reason why I'm recommending option four, it really has the same impact as option three, because that money would be going to fund balance anyway. So it really, it's not adding an expense back in yet. Now, I will tell you what I believe would happen if you pick option four. If we put it all towards fund balance, we estimate right now that that would get us to 9.36%. I do believe when the auditor closes the end of the year, we'll be slightly higher than that. I think we will have a fund balance over 10%, which is our goal. However, because we won't have those one-time revenues next year, we will have that fund balance go down again. So there are things that we did to infuse, to cut, to try to bring our fund balance up this year, like the, like the taking the $4 million from the risk pool fund, like the $7 million, $7 to $8 million of recovery of salaries from ARPA that we're trying to implement this year, that we won't have next year. Just those two things are already about a two-cent tax. So I am recommending that for now, because of the uncertainty, that we take option four and just put all of that towards our fund balance to help restore our budget. And continue to monitor, to continue to let us get through at least the first one to two quarters of this new fiscal year, see how things are happening. And then if, if we feel like we have any breathing room, we could consider something else. But I really, I think we are going to have to continue to be very conservative, do those exercises that we talked about, looking through our expenses, continue just to stay the course, being very fiscally responsible to maintain our growth, to maintain our, to maintain our expense growth and keep ourselves, bring ourselves more into alignment between expenses and revenues. But would welcome your feedback.
Just real quick, Betsy, we're still instituting the 5% across-the-board operational cuts that-
Yes, sir.
And the hiring freeze-
Yes, sir.
And all the other stuff that we, that we talked about before, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I tend to agree to that we need to, then we, we need to get our fund balance as high as we can. And I would, I would advocate if, you know, if we do something else, I think, you know, economic development, I would advocate for replenishing some of the economic development fund because that is really one of our biggest tools when it comes to trying to counteract what's going on with, with, you know, residential property values and residential property taxes, you know, being the way they are, right?
Yes, sir.
And, and the imbalance between commercial property and residential property values. And, you know, I think, I, you know, it's probably, I was going to bring it up in the last discussion when we were talking about the ledge, the ledge agenda, but I think it would be difficult in the truncated timeline that we have to try to tack any, any type of amendment onto a bill, and I don't even know if it'd be possible. But we really need to, I think, do some work with our, with our lobbyists and with, with Elisa and with our, with our team to, to propose some appraisal reforms. Because, I mean, the way that things are set up, it's just so rigged against the residential property owner. And to make it, to make it, you know, more accessible to them to be able to protest. And I know that that's not necessarily within the county's wheelhouse, but we do appoint, you know, we have, we have members on the, on the CAD board as well, and, you know, as taxing entities, we have a stake. And so I just wanted to mention that moving forward. But I, I would definitely agree with option four. And if we are going to take any of that out of the fund balance, then I would advocate for it to go to economic fund.
I don't know if you heard me, but I'm, I'm really recommending option four.
Yes, I did hear you.
Okay.
I'm kind of in agreement with Commissioner Stout about the economic impact fund.
Absolutely.
If anything, we need to keep it, it's that, I think.
Right now, we do have approximately, I believe it's 3.8 million, Jessica or Melissa, can you correct me? We have $3.8 million in the economic impact fund now. And so there are things where I've also really tried to encourage Roberto and the team. So in economic development, you probably have heard me say this before, and really why, when we built that economic impact fund, there are things that you do with that fund, not just to incentivize, not to incentivize, but to invest. And the way it's, in my experience, the smartest way of using that fund is to use it for workforce training, like where we will train the workforce for that employer or that business to come in, to bring them up to a skill level, because your workforce usually does not leave. So even if the company were to not be successful, or were to choose to leave on its own five years from now, we keep the workforce for the most part, and they now have a higher skill level. The other thing that's a second smart use of the economic impact fund is investing in infrastructure. An example is when we had a company that was going to come in, and they asked for, they were going to be fronting a major roadway, and they needed a, an exit or turnoffs and a frontage road that was going to be a major cost to their development. Because, and the reason why using incentive funds to do that kind of infrastructure is that infrastructure stays. So no matter what company goes into that site, we will always have that infrastructure, and it increases the property value. So those are, those are the real things that I feel like we should be concentrating. Another example is a rail spur. We looked at partnering with other entities to develop rail spurs in, in areas for industrial. That's a good use of your economic impact fund. So right now, we do have 3.8 million. We have talked about, our policy talks that we will grow that by a percentage until it gets up to the $10 million. Our goal, what, we were at our goal, we had, we had actually exceeded our goal at one point, but then we have borrowed from that fund repeatedly to help balance our budget. So we can go back to the way we built it, which is growing it by a percentage each year until we get back to the $10 million. I believe the policy says we will grow it by the growth in sales tax, or what, it says in the policy, and it's in our financial policies. By the percentage rate of our sales tax. So by the percentage our sales tax is going up is by the same percentage we would grow our economic impact fund.
I, I agree with option four. I think just being as cautious as we can be with all of the unknowns, like you said, Betsy, including grant revenues that we're not sure whether we're going to get next year, I think it's, it's the most prudent thing to do.
I think the, because I was asked about what's the biggest challenge, and as I've worked with companies and when we have discussions, is our ability to keep with the pace of, of the workforce that they need. And we're very, very marginal at this time. And I've talked to Leila as well, I mean, we've got like for the next year or so. But once a company comes in, for example, anyone, the Taiwanese company, some of the things they talked about, like, we don't have that, that skilled labor workforce of what they want in two years from now. You know, they, once they come in, they start improving, and you don't want them to want to leave because we're not keeping up with their level of technology in the workforce. So I really appreciate that, because I think that's going to be our biggest challenge in economic development. We're really good, people want to come in, but can we stay with the pace of their needs? It's sort of scary.
And I do believe if we take option four, and if things, if for some reason things look better, or we don't see as many negative impacts, we, we definitely, if a project came in that was extremely large and would exceed our economic impact fund, we could do, there's some things we could do to take the offsets of what we're seeing in budget to be able to commit to a larger project and know that we're going to be able to replenish or subsidize the fund, add more to the fund during the fiscal year or as we head into the next fiscal year. But I really do believe option four will, will give us the best, be in the best position. And again, I think option four will bring us up higher at the end of this coming fiscal year. But we can't even use that as a, because it, it's going to pull, we know there's going to be an offset in FY 27 because of these things that we're doing right now to, to balance our budget, the things that we're borrowing from or taking funding from, that we won't be able to borrow or take from again. So it will go down in some in FY 27, the, the fund balance by the end of FY 27. So those, and, and we've already talked about this, these will be on the register, those things that we know, that we borrowed this year, that we won't be able to use as a revenue this, this coming year. So we're already adding those to our budget register to be mindful of, to, to show you all, like, remember, we already have, will not have this funding coming in this coming year. One will be a loss of revenue and one will be an expense, actually, both of them will be loss of revenue. I think both the risk pool funds, the way we're booking it, the infusion from the risk pool fund and the offsets, one-time offsets, will be a loss of revenue in FY 27. So with that, I think I hear a consensus to go option four. I see several heads shaking.
Yes.
And then that's what we'll bring back in the proposed budget, that will be brought back for adoption September 15th. Okay, thank you all.
Oh, Betsy, sorry, I have one question. Will we be getting updated budget books at all?
We do prepare a final budget book for the adoption for September 15th.
Okay.
And the, the one thing you will see in those books, you'll see changes, like every time you are approving a budget adjustment on a Monday, those changes go into the book. So any, when, as Barbara, any updated revenue projections that Barbara brings us, those, as much as we can assume, and once we hit the cutoff to print the book or to compile the book, everything up to that point will be in the book.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Judge, would you like to move into executive or take a recess at this time?
Do you want to? Yeah? Yeah, we said we'd try to finish everything-
Okay.
Power through.
Thank you.
Okay. So Commissioners Court will now move into executive session to discuss item 5A and 5B pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071. It is 12:22 PM.
Because there's other practices that you can apply in your garden to prevent pests from coming in. I would like to encourage everybody to start getting familiar with the plans that they can grow here in the community. El Paso can offer you a lot of opportunity in terms of growing conditions.
Hello everyone, it's Sam Guzman and here we are live at Ascot at the Park for another episode of Small Town Spotlight. Ascot at the Park is home to many things. One of those things is its golf course. Whether you are a seasoned pro or someone who just wants to appreciate what the outdoors has to offer here at Ascot at the Park. You know, Scott at the Golf Course might be the place to be to try it out.
Ascot at the Golf Course is special for many reasons. I think the number one thing that makes this area special, lots of families tell me, oh yeah, my grandpa used to play here. That's how I got introduced to golf. It's just been around for so long and generational and they're loyal to the golf course.
Gentlemen, how are we playing today? Good? You're going the wrong way. Hold that way.
One of the best things that Ascot at the Park that we have to offer is the Delta 9. That's a shorter golf course, executive type golf course, nine holes. The par four is a little shorter, but it has a par three and a par five. That's a great thing to learn on. And the wonderful thing about that is, let's say, you know, we're booked on tee times. We hate to tell somebody who walks in the door, we don't want them to go home without playing. We want to find them a spot, you know, and we're very accommodating golf courses in that respect. That's a no-no in my book, you know, I do not want that guy drive down here and then be told, oh, we don't have a spot for you. So we can accommodate, that gives us 27 holes. So when we have a tournament going on, the main, we can send them over to the Delta 9, start them off, and then they can jump over here on the main and win the tournament. We've got the lighted driving range, you know, and we stay open until nine o'clock in the summer and 10 o'clock on Friday and Saturday nights. We did add some black fuse 10, 12 years ago on this golf course. That made a huge difference. The golf course before was a little bit shorter for championship type players. And once we did that, we lengthened it up and, you know, with the technology, that was great. When I get to talk to people there, that's right up my alley. I love that, you know, I get to talk about golf and they sit down. And you've learned so many things, you know, you get to know the people on the first level.
Beautiful. I hope to come out here one day and get around, it'll be a good round, but it'll definitely be an experience. Now, another sport Ascot at the Park is home to is a sport that is quickly becoming one of the most popular sports in the entire world. We're talking about pickleball. Ascot at the Park is one of the most popular places to play here in the Sun City. It's got four hard outdoor co-cords. And again, it's a sport that is quickly gaining many, much attention. And Ascot at the Park is the place to be if you're looking to play.
Turns out there's a casual way to get exercise and then it just kind of spiraled into an addiction.
Over the last two years, John Butten has become quite the pickleball athlete, all thanks to these courts here at Ascot at the Park.
Three zero. My next door neighbor and I met somebody else that played here on a regular basis. And then we went one day and then it was two and then it was four and then it turned into like five or six times a week. Here's yours.
John calls his courts the hub for pickleball in the Sun City.
Yeah, you know, it's only a couple of miles from my house, so it makes the addiction worse because I know I can get here quick. And so this part of town is pretty central.
Pickleball's success does come with a downside. According to John, the relatively new courts at Ascot at the Park already show similar intent.
Over time, it's caused the surface to crack even though it's fairly new. And so now they're gonna redo it because it's such a popular thing right now.
And John says the best part of pickleball? Anyone can play.
Zero zero two. There are plenty of places to play. It's free once you buy all the equipment and there's plenty of people who'll teach you how to do it. Four three one. It usually starts out recreationally for most people and then it turns into an addiction.
You know, it's good enjoyment, good relaxation, good therapy coming out here and coping with situations and relaxations. It's peaceful. It's quiet. It's nice.
In the summertime, it's nice and cool down here. About eight o'clock starts getting warm. But it's nice and cool to come down here and relax for a couple of hours before you have to go out here and face the world.
The bait hits very, you know, when I first started out here, they were hitting on chicken breast. They stopped hitting on chicken breast. What's very popular is weenie hot dog. And then they stopped hitting on the hot dog and then all of a sudden they start hitting on the shrimp and then it slows down on the shrimp. Now I'm using some stink bait and it really stinks. So hopefully we should have something more with stink bait.
But it's great. When the fish are biting, it's great. The child will put the hook in their mouth and which is supposed to be when they pull on it like they told before. They use the outside of the line and get the hook set in their mouth. And you gotta try it and you're trying to hunt fish and fish out. Like that. There he goes.
Well, the largest one I caught here was a 15 pounder. Yeah, you can eat them. I don't because I like to catch and release.
I was, I was gonna eat fish. I eat the fish and I've been fishing with it 16 years. And they're maybe trying to make a good day.
I had a hard time believing that cars were just zooming around this place. We took him out to Ascot at the Park, we hooked his brain a little bit and this is what he had to say. Check it out.
We are standing roughly, probably right off of turns one and two for Evans Oval. It was the first really modern racetrack built here in El Paso back in 1939. Walter Gold decided that he had enough of the city. He's racing over it at the Rodeo Field, which is now the County Coliseum. Everybody was complaining, it's too loud, it's too dusty. He says, you know what, forget you guys, I'm gonna go out and build a new speedway. And this is where he built it. If we're standing where I think we're standing, we're right about turn number one. So turn one and turn two would come around here. The back stretch is probably right about where that palm tree is. And then what would be the pits would be right about where our golf carts are. And then the rest of this grandstands manager will be right here. And big scoreboard over here on the north side where people would poke their heads through to watch the race. We were the center of racing. We had people come from all over to come here. It's something to be proud of. We have a rich racing history, whether it's quarter mile drag tour, drag boats, Grand Prix. There were so many weekends, so many people out here, not just the drivers, but the families everywhere that came out. It was a very vital part of the city. Every single time you have a speedway that develops on the outskirts of a city, eventually the city's gonna catch up with it. And that's what happened. They came out here, another good 20 years, and then the city caught up with them and they had to move again. I think it was a very, very vital part because it brought people together and they saw this space that could be used for more than just, you know, paving it over. It made a park, you know, as sad as I am to see the speedway go, it's a beautiful golf course now. But it is part of the history and you need to have people reminded about that, that, you know, sometimes you see that golf course and you see that empty lot and it was something completely different. It's stuff like that, you know, just take a step back and look at it and you'll say, oh yeah, this is pretty cool.
Well, once you're in Ascot at the Park, you'll notice that there is a little community garden right here. This is what it is. It's a teaching and demonstration garden. We're actually about to meet someone who is kind of in charge of this place and is gonna walk us through on how you can actually participate. Come on, let's go meet him. Hi, Eduardo Resgones here with us today. Eduardo, thank you so much for being here with us. Talk to us a little bit about this garden. What is this?
So this is basically to teach the community how they can actually have their own backyard garden and how they can grow their own produce.
So Eduardo, these are Brussels sprouts. Wow, these are so tiny, so beautiful. Now, you're telling me that this community garden is non-profit, right?
It's a non-profit. If we're not making any money, that is just association or fundraising. Most of the money that we do through fundraising or sales is to actually have funds and budget to replace things that are happening at the garden.
All right, Eduardo, so this is really unique. Part of your garden, you're telling me that this is going to exist?
Yes, it should be very buttery.
It's saturated.
Perfect for like omelets or salad, meaty.
You don't put any pesticides on this or anything like that?
No, spraying would usually try to help the community that it should be used as a last resort. Because there's other practices that you can apply in your garden to prevent pests from coming in. I would like to encourage everybody to start getting familiar with the plans that they can grow here in the community. El Paso can offer you a lot of opportunity in terms of growing conditions.
Hello everyone, it's Sam Guzman and here we are live at Ascot at the Park for another episode of Small Town Spotlight. Ascot at the Park is home to many things. One of those things is its golf course. Whether you are a seasoned pro or someone who just wants to appreciate what the outdoors has to offer here at Ascot at the Park. You know, Scott at the Golf Course might be the place to be. Check it out.
Ascot at the Golf Course is special for many reasons. I think the number one thing that makes this area special, lots of families tell me, oh yeah, my grandpa used to play here. That's how I got introduced to golf. It's just been around for so long and generational and they're loyal to the golf course.
Gentlemen, how are we playing today? Good? You're going the wrong way. Hold that way.
One of the best things that Ascot at the Park that we have to offer is the Delta 9. A shorter golf course, executive type golf course, nine holes. The par four is a little shorter, but it has a par three and a par five. That's a great thing to learn on. The wonderful thing about that is, let's say, you know, we're booked on tee times. We hate to tell somebody who walks in the door, we don't want them to go home without playing. We want to find them a spot, you know, and we're very accommodating golf courses in that respect. That's a no-no in my book, you know, I do not want that guy drive down here and then be told, oh, we don't have a spot for you. So we can accommodate, that gives us 27 holes. So when we have a tournament going on, the main, we can send them over to the Delta 9, start them off, and then they can jump over here on the main when the tournament's done. We've got the lighted driving range, you know, and we stay open until nine o'clock in the summer and 10 o'clock on Friday and Saturday nights. We did add some black fuse 10, 12 years ago on this golf course. That made a huge difference. The golf course before was a little bit shorter for championship type players. And once we did that, we lengthened it up and, you know, with the technology, that was great. When I get to talk to people there, that's right up my alley. I love that, you know, I get to talk about golf, I get to sit down. And you've learned so many things, you know, you get to know the people on the first level.
Beautiful. I hope to come out here one day and get around. It'll be a good round, but it'll definitely be an experience. Now, another sport Ascot at the Park is home to is a sport that is quickly becoming one of the most popular sports in the entire world. We're talking about pickleball. Ascot at the Park is one of the most popular places to play here in the Sun City. It's got four hard outdoor co-cords. Again, it's a sport that is quickly gaining many, much attention. And Ascot at the Park is the place to be if you're looking to play.
Turns out there's a casual way to get exercise and then it just kind of spiraled into an addiction.
Over the last two years, John Butten has become quite the pickleball athlete, all thanks to these courts here at Ascot at the Park.
Three zero. My next door neighbor and I met somebody else that played here on a regular basis. And then we went one day and then it was two and then it was four and then it turned into like five or six times a week. Here's yours.
John calls his courts the hub for pickleball in the Sun City.
Yeah, you know, it's only a couple of miles from my house, so it makes the addiction worse because I know I can get here quick. And so this part of town is pretty central.
Pickleball's success does come with a downside. According to John, the relatively new courts at Ascot at the Park already show similar intent.
Over time, it's caused the surface to crack even though it's fairly new. And so now they're gonna redo it because it's such a popular thing right now.
And John says the best part of pickleball? Anyone can play.
Zero zero two. There are plenty of places to play. It's free once you buy all the equipment and there's plenty of people who'll teach you how to do it. Four three one. It usually starts out recreationally for most people and then it turns into an addiction.
You know, it's good enjoyment, good relaxation, good therapy coming out here and coping with situations and relaxation. It's peaceful, it's quiet, nice.
In the summertime, it's nice and cool down here. About eight o'clock starts getting warmer, but the tightest and coolest thing down here is the grass. There's a couple of hollers, and so you have to go out here and face the world.
The bait, it varies, you know? When I first started out here, they were hitting on chicken breasts. They stopped hitting on chicken breasts. What's very popular is weenie hot dog. And then they stopped hitting on the hot dog. And then all of a sudden, they start hitting on the shrimp, and then it slows down on the shrimp. Now I'm using some stink bait, and it really stinks. So hopefully, we can catch someone with some stink bait.
But it's great when the fish are biting, it's great. The trout will put the hook in their mouth, which you're forced to do when they pull on it, like they pulled before. Then you yank on the line, get the hook set in their mouth. And you gotta try it with kind of hard fish, you could try. Like that. There you go.
Well, the largest one I saw here was a 15-pounder. Yeah, you can eat them. I don't because I like to catch them to leave.
I would, if I was gonna eat fish, I eat the fish. And I've been fishing here for 16 years. And you live despite another day.
I had a hard time believing that cars were just zooming around this place. We took them out to Ascatop Park, we cooked and drank a little bit, and this is what he had to say. Check it out.
We are standing roughly, probably right off of turns one and two for Evans Oval. It was the first really modern racetrack built here in El Paso back in 1939. Walter Gold decided that he had enough of the city. He's racing over at the rodeo field, which is now the County Coliseum. Everybody was complaining, "It's too loud, it's too dusty." He says, "You know what? Forget you guys, I'm gonna go out and build a new speedway." And this is where he built it. If we're standing where I think we're standing, we're right about turn number one. So turn one and turn two would come around here. The back stretch is probably right about where that palm tree is. And then what would be the pits would be right about where our golf carts are. And then the rest of the grandstands and everything will be right here. And big scoreboard over here on the north side where people would hope their heads through and watch the race. We were the center of racing. We had people come from all over to come here. It's something to be proud of. We have a rich racing history, whether it's quarter-mile dragsters, drag boats, Grand Prix. There were so many weekends, so many people out here, not just the drivers, but the families and everybody that came out. It was a very vital part of the city. Every single time you have a speedway that develops on the outskirts of a city, eventually the city's gonna catch up with it. And that's what happened. They came out here. Another good 20 years, and then the city caught up with them, and they had to move again. I think it was a very, very vital part because it brought people together and they saw this space that could be used for more than just, you know, paving it over. It made a park, you know? And as sad as I am to see the speedway go, it's a beautiful golf course now. But it is part of the history, and you need to have people reminded about that, that, you know, sometimes you see that golf course and you see that empty lot, and it was something completely different. It's stuff like that, you know, just take a step back and look at it, and you'll say, "Oh yeah, this is pretty cool."
Well, once you're in Ascatop Park, you'll notice that there's a little community garden right here. This is what it is. It's a teaching and demonstration garden. We're actually about to meet someone who is kind of in charge of this place, and he's gonna walk us through on how you can actually participate. Come on, let's go meet him. Hi! Eduardo Mascones is here with us today. Eduardo, thank you so much for being here with us.
Of course.
Talk to us a little bit about this garden. What is this?
So this is basically to teach the community how they can actually have their own backyard garden and how they can grow their own produce.
So Eduardo, this, these are Brussels sprouts. Wow, these are so tiny, so beautiful. Now, you're telling me that this community garden is a nonprofit, correct?
Yes, as a nonprofit, since we're not making any money as an association or fundraising, most of the money that we do through fundraising or sales is to actually have funds and budget to replace things that are happening at the garden.
All right, Eduardo, so this is really unique. Part of your garden, you're telling me that this is finished?
Mm-hmm.
I can actually eat this?
Yes, it should be very buttery.
It looks actually, it's really good.
Perfect for like omelets or for like salads, smoothies.
You don't put any pesticides on this or anything like that?
No.
You were a sophomore in 1878?
Uh-oh. You've aged well.
Go ahead.
Commissioners' court has reconvened to special open session. We have completed all the items on the agenda, Judge.
Well, thank you. Okay. Thank you back there. Translators, production team, commissioners. Have a good week and a good weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
And we're supposed to go where, Commissioner?
Oh, for the speedway.
Do it over in, I don't know.
I thought they were at Betsy's. Where? They're at your place? At your...
And we can do Steven Steele either there or over at...
Of course.
Are we adjourned?
Yeah, this concludes today's meeting at 1:21 PM.